Okay. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Sacramento City Council Tuesday, July 23rd at 5:03 PM. If we're gonna start with the roll call.
Thank you.
If the clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Ashby, councilmember Harris, councilmember Hanson, councilmember Carr, councilmember Jennings, councilmember Chenier, and Vice Mayor Guerra.
Here.
And for the record, councilmember Warren and Mayor Steinberg will be absent this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Apologize to the audience. We're adjusting to our new microphone buttons here. If I'm gonna ask actually our folks from the Library Foundation and the Literacy Movement to join us here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today, if they could come to the podium, please. If everyone could join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. We're gonna, if you guys could hang out on the side real quick, we have a couple presentations, but I think we're gonna start off with councilmember Hanson's presentation first here. So if our library folks will hang out for a quick minute and then we'll, our literacy folks will hang out for a quick minute, and we have a recognition of Jim Denny's 85th anniversary. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I believe the family, the McCune and Lenon family are here. For Jim, come on up to the podium, please. I love the T-shirts. You all wanna come up or just some of you? They're shy. It's okay, don't be shy. So many of you in the audience and on the dais know our famous restaurant, Jim Denny's, on 12th Street. It's been featured in a lot of different TV shows, but it's most popular because it's such a wonderful place and it's been around now for 85 years. And it really is not only a historic landmark, but it is a community landmark because I've lived in the Alkali Flat neighborhood now for 12 years, over 12 years, and when I first moved to the neighborhood, you were and still are the best place to get brunch, although now that I'm getting older, I have to be a little bit more careful about the bacon and hubcap pancakes. But I do think it's wonderful. When you go and you sit at the counter, the family is so nice in helping you figure out what you want. You help answer the phone occasionally because it's on the wall right next to you and that's your job if you're sitting next to it. But I really think that the family not only has invested, the families have invested in it, but they've kept the traditions alive of what is a classic Sacramento institution. And so I just, on behalf of the mayor and city council, I wanna recognize you, 1934 was a long time ago, and it is a treasure, and I expect to see Guy Fieri every once in a while coming in and out of there, but it may just be John Colville after the gym.
That's our city treasurer over there.
He works out, but he doesn't mind a good brunch, right?
Oh.
Okay, good. Anyway, I just think you're wonderful in the, whether it's Harrison Ford, Ronald Reagan, or any one of us, we're lucky to have you. And if you'd like to say a few words on behalf of Jim Denny's.
I just wanna thank you all.
Can you step over to the microphone, please, and tell us your name?
I'm James B. I just wanna thank you all for patronizing and helping us have our advance go smoothly. I work for the City Utility Department also for City Sacramento, and whenever I need something, I call Allie Muller. Ask if she goes to Steve and Paul Rolling.
That's awesome. Well, thank you. Do you wanna introduce the kids real quick?
This is Bailey, this is Bailey, Ham, Danica, and Emily.
Awesome. And who's the one holding?
Danielle.
Oh, Danielle. Hi, Danielle.
That's a good old wife.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate all that you do and for keeping us happy and fed.
Let's give a round of applause for 85 years of great success in the city of Sacramento. And Councilmember Hanson is going to take a quick photo here in the front with the family. The next item on our agenda here for a special presentation is the recognition of Literacy Day for building a literacy movement in the city of Sacramento. If I could ask all our partners in the literacy movement to please come on up, and I see a few of our champions in literacy here, our executive director for the Library Foundation, Eppro Javis, Jody Nelson here, our biggest advocate over there at Sac State, and also a constituent of ours, a neighbor, Rachel Minnick, here with Reading Partners, and many others here to talk about Literacy Day. You know, the, one of the, one of the biggest issues affecting our youth today is how many young kids are not reading at grade level, and it's an unfortunate situation because we've always had challenges with just making sure that people were having issues not reading at that actual grade level, leading to other issues where they feel insecure. Other challenges for kids to succeed, and I think this is gonna be one of those efforts. And the resolution we have here today is recognizing a movement. Now, Literacy Day is not till September, in the month of September, but we're starting early because we're building a movement. And today, the resolution here is to recognize that. And before I read any of this, I'm gonna ask our colleagues here to introduce each other and say a few words about the need to build a literacy movement in the city of Sacramento.
Great. Thanks, Eric, very much, and thank you for being a part of trying to make this happen. We are a group of citizens creating the literacy movement. I'm here today from the Sacramento Public Library Foundation along with my colleague, Dan Zabour. I'm also here with Rachel Minnick from Reading Partners, Jody Nelson from Sac State, Cameron Long from Social Venture Partners, Robert Honaker from Anthem Blue Cross, Lori Hawk from Murphy Austin, and Katie Horb and Wolers from United Way. So we're a small part of the group that are coming together to create a plan to put literacy on everybody's agenda, and Jody would like to make a statement.
Thank you. On March 3rd, a group of approximately 30 Sacramento citizens came together to talk about creating a children's literacy movement in Sacramento County. The group included literacy providers, the library, educators from K-12 through higher ed, corporate and individual philanthropists, and policymakers, including Councilman Guerra. Thank you. Today, we ask that all policymakers be aware of how critical it is that our children are able to read, all of our children. After years of effort, Sacramento has moved the needle a bit from a 34% of our children reading at grade level to 45% reading at grade level. Clearly is not enough. Reading is the gateway to becoming a productive, engaged member of society and a voting member of that society. And by establishing September 8th as Sacramento Literacy Day, we align with International Literacy Day, and we create an opportunity for everyone to focus on this problem. And this problem belongs to all of us. Along with the city of Sacramento's proclamation made today, Sacramento County, Elk Grove, Citrus Heights, and Rancho Cordova have all agreed to make the same proclamation. This is the beginning of everyone realizing that literacy is a problem in our county and that it is critical to a healthy, productive, and equitable society, and most importantly, that we must actively engage in fixing this problem now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jody. As you can see, we're still working out our speaker issues here, but we will all read. That's one thing's for sure. Any other of your speakers here? Well, first, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ashby here, also a member of the Library Authority.
Thank you. New system. I thought I broke that thing as soon as I walked in and pulled it down, but first of all, I just wanna thank you for being here. I've been on the council for, I think I'm in my ninth year, and I've been on the Library Authority that whole time, and it's been a real privilege. I've enjoyed every moment there, and I would say that the greatest things I've seen the library community achieve over the last nine years have been when everyone who is working on these important things like literacy work together. And some of you are in this space now. April's been there the whole time. Sac State, a terrific partner. I, of course, have my favorite, it's Rachel Minnick. And Reading Partners, I think, is irreplaceable. I often say this, if we funded them to the tune that I think they should be funded, that number 42 would be much, much higher. I know Rachel well. I know what she's capable of, and I would love to see us pouring more into her and more into that program. But I also wanna thank the library themselves. I don't think there's a bigger champion for literacy than Rivka Sasse. We all sort of rally around her and take her lead, and we're so fortunate in Sacramento to have lots of people that love our library. Many of them are here, many of them are not here. The Friends, there's little Friends branches all over the city of Sacramento, and they each give mightily too to this, and most of the members on this body have taken a turn at the helm of the Library Authority, and Eric, I'm really proud of you for spearheading this. That's fantastic. I think if we all just keep pushing, that we will make progress, and I'm honored to be a part of it in any small way. Good on you guys for being here, and to the partners who aren't in the room, good on them too for being there with us all the rest of the time. So, good job, Eric.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanna remind everyone of the swimming program that we have going on in conjunction with the library. If you read five books checked out from the library, they will give you two passes to any of our swimming pools, and maybe even joined by another swimming pool later, that'll be 50 meters. And a pass will be for you and your parent or your guardian. So for every five books you check out of the library, they will give you a pass for you and your guardian to go to the swimming pool, and there's no limit on the number of five-book iterations you can use. So you can read a couple of hundred books this summer and spend the rest of the time basking at the pool. So I thank the library for going, for helping us with that program, and for all the council members who've opened up their pools for that same purpose. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, literacy is really the foundation of success, not only in our society, but just globally. I grew up in a broken family. I spent a lot of time at the library. In fact, I used to read books about carpentry, and by the time I became a carpenter, I already knew how to build a house. It's a pretty remarkable thing, and just the other day, in fact, yesterday morning, I attended Freedom Schools, put on by Roberts Family Development Center, and did Read Aloud. And to these young African-American kids, I read a book about Jesse Owens, somebody they had never heard about, but a major figure in American history, and their eyes were shining like stars in the nighttime sky. This is really important work that you're doing. It's essential to us in Sacramento and just generally, so thank you for your efforts. It's a great thing to do.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. We have a resolution here, and, you know, from my own personal standpoint, my family, when we immigrated to the country, didn't know any English, and it was our library and the ability of people who donated books to us. So I think what's important here today is that we have multiple people, community, education, private industry, all here to support that it's not just on our library to address the issue of literacy. You know, essentially, we had good Americans who cared about literacy and helped our family learn and read English, and that, I think, is something we need to push on. With that, we've got a resolution here to start this movement, whereas September is the National Reading Month, and September 8th is International Literacy Day. Whereas reading and writing are fundamental tools needed to participate fully in our country's democracy, I'm gonna skip all the way down to the end, therefore be it resolved that by the mayor and the city council of Sacramento, we do hereby proclaim September 8th a Sacramento Literacy Day in the city, and urge Sacramento residents and civic organizations to read, donate time and resources, and volunteer to create a culture of literacy for all members of the community, signed by the entire city council and our mayor. Let's get to work for September 8th Literacy Day, Sacramento. A big round of applause for all our advocates. We'll do it about face. Thank you very much. A big round of applause. Now, Madam, Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report out for closed session?
There's nothing to report out at this time.
Madam Clerk, what's the next item on the agenda?
Our consent calendar is the next item on the agenda. I believe we have comments on items 6, 30, and 42 from the council, and I have eight speakers queued up to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay, let's begin with a public comment on the consent calendar, and then we'll move to the council comments.
Thank you. As I said, I have eight speakers. The first is David Guero on item 20 and 42. The rest are all on item 42. So following David Guero is Flavio Huizar, then Joe Contreras. Is David here? Thank you. And let me announce our two-minute speaker that you'll see on the display behind you has been, has been flashing. You will get two minutes, but you'll see it flash a little bit, so.
Where's the display?
I guarantee you it's two minutes.
Where's the clock?
You should see it on the display.
Yeah, it'll pop up.
New technologies in all these.
Okay. Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for your opportunity to speak. My name is David Guero, the Park and Rec Commissioner for District 3, appointed by Councilman Harris. I'm also a board member of the Greenhouse Community. First, I wanna thank Councilman Harris for being a warrior for the North Gate Garden Land, South Natomas area. I'm speaking in support of item 42, funding for North Gate Boulevard, Garden Arts Center in South Natomas, and the pop-ups at Stanford Settlement and the Greenhouse. I think everybody's excited for the opportunity to continue to serve the youth in a positive manner and provide these pop-ups. We've been doing it for a long time, and now we have some new tools to implement. I also wanted to thank, or speak in favor of the purchase of Chuck Wagon Park, the land acquisition. I saw that on the consent calendar. And also, the, it was mentioned by Councilman Carr, the Natomas Community Center and Aquatic Center, and hopefully that gets all worked out and we add that to the Natomas. I think it's a, it's a, it's a great idea, and it's a great project, and it's gonna get driven to completion, I believe that. And the last item, I'd like to thank Councilman Carr for your service to our country and your service to City Sacramento. I understand that you will not be running for reelections. I read that in the Bee the other day. Thank you for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guero.
Thank you, Councilman Harris.
Next speaker is Flavio Huizar, Joe Contreras, then Annette Emery. The rest are all on item number 42.
Hello, city council. I just, my name is Flavio Huizar, and I'm actually involved with the North Gate Garden Land Association and the NAG, which is the North Gate Advisory Group in our community. And I basically came today just seeking your support for North Gate Boulevard. North Gate Boulevard has been an area that's been long forgotten. This is an area that's been there for a very long time. This is a very diverse area. This is an area that has many young people, many people that have been there for a very long time, great need. There's a lot of development going on around North Gate Boulevard right now, and what we're seeking is that you will adopt this on 42. I see here that you're gonna be adopting this, and hopefully if you adopt it and it gets, you know, done, as, we need your support to make that street safer. That street has been there for a very long time, and the streetscape that we have here that's in this plan will help us to start to be able to better improve that area on North Gate Boulevard. You know, there's many different organizations that have been doing different things there. We're talking about the Stanford Settlement. We're talking about the investment that Jeff and Angelique have made in this area to help us to reach out to this community. But North Gate Boulevard is an artery where, as you drive down that street, you wonder why has there been no improvement? Why has there been nothing done to the sidewalks? The sidewalks on this street are not safe for anybody to go down. If you're in a wheelchair, God forbid that you go down this street and you have an accident. And so I'm really hoping that you guys will adopt this and give us the funding that we need for our community, because our community needs improvement, and we need the investment of the city and of those who have already invested in our area with the different things that we do in the community. I would hope that you would support this and give us, it's our turn, and thanks to our community, and let's see what we can do together in our community. Please, thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Contreras, then Annette Emery, then Todd Boyd.
Good evening, council and Vice Mayor Guerra. My name is Joe Contreras. I'm a neighborhood advocate for, in the North Gate Garden Land area. I was former president of the Garden Land North Gate Neighborhood Association, and also I'm a former city planning commissioner from 2006 to 2012. I was appointed by Mayor Fargo at the time, and I was a planning commissioner for Angelique there for a while. And now I'm the chair for the North Gate Advisory Group. That's why, that's why I'm here, to ask you guys for your support for North Gate Boulevard. Like my counterpart just mentioned, he's on our, that North Gate Boulevard has been here a long time. It's really been neglected. The North Gate Boulevard Master Plan has been approved 15 years ago, so it's just been sitting there for 15 years, and now's the time that we're asking for your support so that we can at least get started on this master plan and the streetscape for the safety of the kids on North Gate Boulevard that walk along the Boulevard to go to school. And we're just asking for your help. We've already met with Councilman Harris. We met with the mayor two weeks ago, and we sat down and we told him our issues, and we set down some commitments by the, by him and our city councilman. So we're asking you for your help and your support and your vote to help North Gate Boulevard because it is really our turn for something to happen, to start happening on North Gate Boulevard. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras.
Next speaker is Annette Emery, then Todd Boyd.
Hello, city council members, and thank you for looking at this item. My name's Annette Emery, and I'm president of the Garden Land North Gate Neighborhood Association, which has been around for quite a while. We're not really quite sure when it got started, but we've done, we try to do a lot of things in our neighborhood, and I've been in the area almost 25 years, and I'm a newcomer. This is an area with longtime families and many, many generations. And it's really interesting, it's so often money goes to areas that have just fallen over the cliff. Everybody goes, oh, geez, we've gotta do something. It's a mess. You know what? North Gate's not there. We can do so much before, it's just sort of been ignored for so many years, and we certainly never wanted to go where you're going, I'd never go in that neighborhood. But if you do it now, it's more effective, it's cheaper, it's great opportunities. So I'm really hoping that you will look at the streetscape, the P-Bid, the Art and Garden Center pop-ups, because we have a really vibrant community, we have longtime family members, and we would just like to make it that people regard North Gate as something more than, that you just zoom down to go someplace else. A lot of us feel there's a lot going on in the neighborhood. We would just like to make it an easier place for people to discover all those by doing some improvements in the area. I hope you will consider item number 42. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Todd Boyd, then Sharon Jennings.
My name is Todd Boyd. I'm a native Sacramento, and I've lived in South Natomas for 10 years, and I'm very active in the art community. I'm a poet, and I run writing workshops, and I run an open mic. I'm a radio DJ. So I'm here in support of item 42 for the South Natomas and Garden Land and North Gate Improvement Project. It's specifically about the Art and Art Center, Garden and Art Center, excuse me. The project will remodel former Fire Station 15 located at 1640 West Hill Camino. I think that address is wrong, but we, we want to work with the city in developing the firehouse, and we have a business plan, and we're ready to go. We think it'd be a great asset to the South Natomas area, as well as all of the improvements that are in this item 42. It will improve our community and make it a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Sharon Jennings, then Carolina E. Flores.
Mr. Mayor and members, I'm Sharon Jennings from South Natomas. I respectfully request your eye vote on item number 42. Thank you, or on the consent calendar, thank you.
Next speaker is Carolina Flores, and then Amy M. Takahama.
Hi, I'm Carolina Elena Flores. Haven't been here for a very long time. I'm president of LULAC, Lorenzo Patino for Sacramento, and for your information, we just had LULAC, the state and national, approve of my resolution. You'll be hearing about that soon. I'm here to ask for your support of 42. I think it's important that North Gate and Garden Land, who have been ignored for decades before you guys, that needs to get started on this 42. I also, I'm glad to hear about the people that wanted to make that, the speakers going in and out. People won't really want this to happen. I would like to see this get the $1 million that it needs, or whatever more it needs, because it needs to get financing from the millions of dollars that Archie is getting for improving the roads. And I'm glad we need to get monies from the youth funds that are available to get this going. This has been a long, ignored area, and you all know that, so this has got to have a happening. The 42 will get it started, make that fire station and art center to get those kids that have art classes and employment and all the things that are needed to make it thrive. That place has not been given the whatever has been needed to get it started, and I really believe that you all are committed to getting that started and to make sure that the continual funding contains every budgetary here. Make a collaboration of all the funds, and you know there's millions and millions of dollars out there. Make a collaboration of all those funds and make it happen. You can improve North Gate and Garden, beyond what it's, you can't even think of what it is right now. Get those Archie funds, get the youth funds, and this budgetary, the regular ones from Sacramento, I think is important, just to get started, okay? Let's be real. This is to get started, and work on this area that has been long ignored. I'm done.
Always a pleasure to have a LULAC here.
And our final speaker on this item is Amy M. Takahama.
Hi, hello, mayor and council members. My name is Amy Takahama. I am the president of the Natomas Garden Arts Club and the owner of the cafe inside the community center in Natomas, and I'm here to ask you for your support for item number 42. As you can see, the Natomas community is a very active and lively community. We are ready to start this project, ready to make the improvements as soon as we get the funding. It is essentially a win-win, an easy win situation for the entire city. It is essentially a win-win, an easy-win situation for the entire city, not just our community, because the improvements that will be made with the funding from item 42 will not only improve the quality of life, like I said, not just make Natomas a wonderful place to live, but also a great place to visit. So hopefully you will come by and see us in Natomas and support item number 42. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Well, it's clear that District 3 is here and present and ready, so with that, Councilmember
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I had comments on three items. Should I take them all while I'm talking?
Yes, we've got items 630 and 42, I think you've identified.
Yeah, I'll start with 42. So obviously, the Northgate and Natomas communities are very involved and proud people for a good reason. I found as council member in that area of my district that investments in the Northgate Gardenland community really pay dividends. We reinstituted the youth baseball parade, and the pride that was shown by that community was palpable. I mean, it ignited a spark, and I think actually, perhaps because of that, NAG was formed, you know, people realized, wow, we, you know, we are a very strong community, and we have needs, and we're going to advocate for our needs. And I always love it when people get busy in their community and try to help solve the problems that they're facing. I have to thank the mayor. Daryl Steinberg came to the community, came to Northgate, he came to Gardenland-Northgate Neighborhood Association and NAG, and heard the community. And this was very important, because, you know, it's no, it's not a mystery that the mayor and I struggled a bit over a couple of issues regarding finance. But the fact of the matter is, a rising tide floats all boats. And this is a very important piece of inclusive economic development that comports exactly with the goals of the mayor. So I'm very pleased that he came and listened to the community and that he is working with me to make this small investment in a community that's really just a seed. But I know that when you plant seeds in gardenland, they grow. You know, I put a lot of investment into Gardenland Park, and the results have been remarkable. The idea that we can now invest in the greenhouse and in Stanford Settlement is extremely exciting to me, because they have been taking care of their own for decades. As pointed out by Annette Emery, you know, it's not that the community has been neglected, and because of the input of the community members, it has not degraded to the point that some other communities have. But a little bit of input now brings dividends that you just can't believe. So Mayor Steinberg, if you're listening out there, I know you're on your vacation, I hope maybe you tuned in. I just want to thank you personally for, you know, burying the hatchet and moving forward in a community that really does deserve investment, but we will see great results from doing that. So I want to thank the community for coming. You know, you show me every day that I'm your representative how important your community is to you, because you invest your heart in it every day. It's very important. On number 30, item number 30 on consent, it's a rejection of a bid. We got only one bid on a, basically a slurry for, you know, various roads within District 3, and I think another district as well, District 1 as well. So I felt important to point out that this is a result of the PLA that we adopted. When that came up for a vote, I was a dissenting vote, because I needed to understand what the actual cost of instituting a citywide PLA would be. And many people testified that a lack of bids and a lack of competition would be one of the results. I think that that's being demonstrated here, and in fact, on the agenda next week is another project where I think that we're going to see this. So I bring this up not because of sour grapes or to say that I was right. The point is that I'm still trying to understand exactly what that decision that the council took, what it will actually cost us. And it's very fair to try to understand the costs of decisions that we make, so that we can weigh them against the benefits. And that was the piece that was missing for me on that vote, that we were going into it not knowing what the real cost would be on individual projects and over time. That's enough on that one. Now, on number 6, could I have the city treasurer come up, John Colville? Would you mind stepping up to the podium? And Mr. Wong, Brian Wong, two very important people here in the city.
Thanks.
Pretty much all the money that we have filters through their hands. Mr. Treasurer, the staff report here was kind of complex and, to me, not entirely clear. In the synopsis, you know, you talked about 8% to 10% as a possible figure of debt that we could incur compared to the general fund. And yet, in our conversations, you had always maintained that 6% was the prudent amount to hold the line at. So which is it?
It is 6%. 8% to 10% was a parameter that was used for other cities, but I've always advocated for 6% is what the uppermost limit of net reserves, or net revenue.
Well, I appreciate that, because I think that that is prudent, and it's where we had been, generally speaking, in the past as well. Is that correct?
Well, we haven't issued general fund-backed debts since the Golden One Center, so it hasn't really been in my tenure. And there was a 15% limit that was never really hit an upper limit, correct, Brian?
Correct.
So I'm putting the line in the sand at 6%.
Well, I very much appreciate the fiscal prudence. The other issue in the report that was not clear to me, and it was in Section 3.3A, well, actually, that points out not to exceed 6% in the red line part of the issue.
Correct.
Now, in 3.2, we're talking about the stress test that we discussed at council. And in that red line item there, it said with or without the assistance of bond...
Municipal advisors or...
Yeah, bond advisor and municipal advisors. Well, I had asked for, and I think it was the will of the council, that it be, that the stress test would include an outside set of advisors, so a municipal advisor that is not on your team. And I would like you to change that, it would be my direction, that you take the with or without and just say with, a municipal advisor and bond advisor as well.
I totally agree, sir. Brian is going to read some new verbiage into the resolution.
Perfect. Well, that satisfies all my concerns, and I thank you for your work and your willingness to come speak to that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember, just as John mentioned, reading Section 3.2 into the record, it'll now read, "As needed, the city treasury office may perform debt capacity analysis with assistance by the underwriter and one of the city's municipal advisors to evaluate the long-term effects of debt issuance in relation to the city's objectives." So that is the change we'll be making to the policy.
And the 6% is actually already included in the red line version in 3.3?
Correct. That is included in Section...
3.3A, I believe.
Yes, that is correct. 3.3A is in the current red line.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you, Brian. So all that being said, this certainly satisfies all my concerns about consent, and I would like to move consent in its entirety.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris, it's been moved. Is there another, it's been seconded. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, Mr. Colville, I appreciate you saying that's your recommendation, but that was my recommendation during the budget process, that we adopt the three reforms to our financial policies, and I'm glad to see they're here, and I thank my colleague Jeff for clarifying those. And I think our colleagues in adopting the recommendations from our budget process continue to keep the city on strong fiscal footing. Mostly what I want to talk about is there is a lot of really wonderful things on the consent calendar tonight, but I'm particularly pleased by the stuff that is coming for Northgate and South Natomas, in the Art and Garden Center and the improvements. I had, I too, like you mentioned, the mayor, I had an opportunity, but without the pleasure of your company, Councilmember Harris, to meet with the Northgate Neighborhood Advisory Group, the NAG. And there, present, but not here present, although she's here in spirit, was former mayor Heather Fargo. And I was very moved by the conversation, and it's such an amazing community that you represent, and I'm glad that they're here with us tonight to celebrate the success for Northgate. But also, I had spent with Amy and Dennis Spear from N Magazine sometime learning about the Art and Garden Center. I can't remember if it was earlier this year or late last year, but that too, that project is really wonderful. And Dennis isn't present here, but he is present here in spirit. And I want to thank both Mayor Fargo and Dennis and everyone else who came to support these projects, and you, Councilmember, for being so thoughtful and helping to support your community and bringing these forward. Mr. City Manager, thank you for the work you've done as well on your team to get these in front of us.
Very much, thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson. And I guess since we adopted, it's our recommendation.
Yes, it is our recommendation.
Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you for that. So first of all, on, let's take item 6 first. So I agree wholeheartedly with these two, and I just want to thank them, both of them, Steve and Jeff, for cleaning this up, because when I read the report, the red line didn't match with the staff report, and I just want to make sure it's abundantly clear, 6 is the cap, and there will be outside help for the stress test. Those, I wouldn't support it otherwise. And if Steve hadn't added those provisions into the original budget, I don't think we would have gotten to where we are now. So thank you to the two of you for cleaning that up, and John, to you and your team, and of course, Brian, for bringing the clarifying language, allows me to support it today. But I want to be really careful, I don't want to make mistakes with those, or long-term successes or long-term mistakes, whichever way that goes for us. So it's important for us to have the best information on the front end that we can have. On the other item that Jeff brought up about the rejection of bids for District 1 and 3, and I also think there might be some 7 in there, important to note, I mean, we're rejecting those bids, so we're gonna, that means we have to try again. And, yeah, right, the one bid that we got. So I just want to make sure that we're doing, City Manager, everything we can to increase the number of bids that we get and work within the system that we have here, and try our best to get some bids, because that is really important work in Districts 1, 3, and 7. So whatever we can do to help, please do let us know. I'm sure that Councilmember Jennings, Harris, and myself would all be willing to help in whatever way we can to encourage people to bid, because we want that work done in our districts. We all need those roads to be fixed up. And then lastly, but most importantly, is item 42. And I have such a hard time, because I'm so jealous of Jeff. I love Northgate, and he knows it. And it's hard, you know, when you fall for a community and then you kind of, you have to cheer for them from the backseat. But I'm really proud of Jeff here, because look where you are. This item is here, you have broad support, he did that. He did that. And Northgate's going to get some much-needed improvement. And in fairness to the many people who have represented it, you know, the way that the city acquired Northgate was that they got it from the county, and the county's standards were much lower. They didn't have standards for curbs, gutters, sidewalks, lights, and things like the city did. And quite frankly, the city has just never invested back into that community to bring them up to the standard that new neighborhoods. So Northgate has had South Natomas and the North Natomas, and all those things built around them with a higher city standard from the very outset. So going back here and just starting somewhere, just starting somewhere to invest, particularly in Northgate, and as I told those guys, I'll be right there behind Jeff to help him and you all with the things you want to do, the bike lanes, and the, of course, Smythe Academy, which is all of our big interest over there, because we're all tired of, you know, people getting hurt trying to get to school. So I can't wait to be a part of that and support Jeff and support you. And David and the rest of you, I'm so proud of you for showing up and staying on top of this, and calling Councilmember Hanson's and Harris and myself and the mayor out to meet with you, and using your advocacy power and your voices to fight for our community. Because I drive down Northgate all the time, too, and I go to La Superior, and I go to Georgia's truck over there, and that is part of my community, too. And I'm, I am excited, I'm thrilled, for what's going to happen for all of us and for our neighborhood there, and I'm thrilled to support it. And Jeff, great work. You did a really good job with this, and I'm super proud to support it today.
Thank you very much. I too would like to support the consent calendar, and I would like to recuse myself on item number 2. I'd like to go on the record of accusing myself on item number 2, and like to move the agenda item.
I think it's, was moved and seconded, but thank you for the motion. Okay, with that, no more council members signed up to speak. I want to also thank the Gardenland-Northgate community that's here today. You know, I think the, my first introduction to Sacramento was the, that community, and maybe it's because it's just, I love the food out there, you know? I mean, it competes with Stockton Boulevard, but, you know, we can continue to have that competition. That just means eating more tacos. But what I wanted to also do is recognize Councilmember Harris for his commitment on this. Our Economic Development Department has been focused on the issue of commercial corridors. And it's not just Stockton Boulevard, it's not just Northgate and Gardenland community, it's also, you know, Franklin Boulevard, Del Paso Boulevard. Our commercial corridors have suffered for a long time, and we've allowed them to decay. And all those communities around those commercial corridors need that attention. And I think that if we focus on those commercial corridors and bring them up, we're going to see so much productivity. I know we focused a lot on the central city and to the great work of Councilmember Hanson here, we've seen some successes, but it's time to see that success in all the commercial corridors out there, too. So good work, it was great to see all the community out here today. And with that, we'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Consent calendar passes with the recusal of item number 2 for Councilmember Jennings. Madam Clerk, we're going to move one item to the front here, item number 53. Since Mr. Colville is sitting right in front, we're going to take care of this quick one from the discussion calendar, and then we'll proceed back to the order of the agenda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I promise to be rapid, and I will. I'm going to give you a little background. Now, can you put my...
I'm happy to waive the presentation. We don't have any speakers unless you have anything to read into the record.
The only thing I would, the staff report's pretty inclusive. I do have an individual from our municipal advisor who did a stress test on this. I know that's critical in our financing, I think that would be a good...
Okay, go for it.
Hey Treasurer, it's been moved, it's been seconded, and if we can have a brief presentation and also from our expert here, briefly, we greatly appreciate it.
Yep. Okay. Mike?
Good evening, Mike Cramworth, Montague and Rosen Associates, we're the municipal advisor for this bond transaction. So we were asked to look at the adequacy of the assessments, of the STID assessments under three scenarios. So I will be brief. We looked at three. The first one was the assessment projections prepared by CBRE, that's the city's consultant on the transaction, and they are projecting a 4% growth rate on the STID assessments from this year through 2058. That's scenario 1. Scenario 2 is our preparation, which is a 2% growth rate for 2020 through 2050. And then scenario 3 is the real stress test. So we looked at assuming a 3% growth rate on the assessment revenue for the coming year, a 19.6% decline in the next year, in 2021, and then no growth thereafter. So for the next 28 years, no growth in the assessment. And this stress test is based on the stress test we ran on the TOT bonds about a year ago, looking back about 10 years at the Great Recession, when TOT revenues declined by 19.2%. So with scenario 3, we're assuming 19.6% decline in one year. I will skip to the slide, this just talks about the pledged assessment revenue surplus account, and I'll go to scenario 1. So scenario 1, which is the CBRE assessment, we've shown that this projection, debt service on the bonds is fully covered by the assessments and by the pledged surplus account. The city's roughly $9 million that are being advanced from TOT bond proceeds would be repaid from the STID assessments by 2025. And there'd be significant additional funds generated by the assessments for other lawful purposes of the district over the course of, through 2050. Scenario 2 is a tougher test, we are only assuming 2% growth over the life. However, debt service is still fully paid on the bonds. The city's TOT bond proceeds are repaid by 2028, so three years longer. And then there's still ample additional funds for STID projects going forward. The last scenario, which is the stress test, is that 19.6% decline in 2021 and no growth thereafter. in 2021 and no growth thereafter. Debt service on the bonds is still fully covered through use of the ongoing assessments and drawing from the surplus account. While the count is drawn down over time, it still fully funds all debt service payments. While the city has advanced or expects to advance nine million dollars of TOT bonds to this financing, in this scenario, only roughly two million is repaid. But this is a very conservative scenario for the assessment growth. That's all I have. You have any questions?
Thank you very much. There's no questions from the council here. It's been properly moved by Councilmember Hanson and seconded by Councilmember Ashby.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just want to say thank you to the Treasurer for applying the budget stress test request to this. I know this was already in process, and I think that's a really good practice, and I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, great work today. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Measure passes. Okay, we're gonna move back on to the file order of the agenda. We're going to public hearings, file item number forty-three here. The staff sets up, and want to welcome our good friends and city employees from Local Thirty-Nine here today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Michael Hannibit with the Community Development Department. I'm here to present the ten K project located at nine thirty K Street. Site currently consists of three vacant commercial buildings, which would be demolished and then redeveloped, with a mixed-use project to include a two-hundred-and-twenty key hotel, one-hundred-and-eighty-six multi-unit dwellings, and ground-floor restaurant and retail spaces. The Planning and Design Commission heard the project on June thirteenth, 2019, and approved staff's recommendation to approve the project. An appeal was filed on June twenty-first, 2019 by the legal firm Lazo Jury LLP on behalf of Laborers International Union of North America, Local One Eighty-Five. Staff has reviewed the appeal and provided a response to the concerns raised in the staff report. Staff disagrees with the assertions of the appellant, as noted in the report, and recommends City Council deny the appeal, thereby approving the project. That concludes my presentation. I know the applicant is here and would like to speak after the appellant.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and ask, since this is a public hearing for an appeal, we're gonna ask the appellant to come up and speak. They have a reasonable amount of time to speak as the appellant, and then we'll continue on to public comment, and then members of the council. Is the appellant here? The, or the project?
The appellant.
The appellant's first.
Yeah. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Mike Lozo for Lozo Jury LLP on behalf of Laborers International Union of North America, Local One Eighty-Five. And we filed the appeal, made some comments before the planning commission. Concern is about the environmental review of the project, and in particular, whether the current process and the previous specific plan EIR addressed the indoor formaldehyde emissions, which we identified in our comments, and the health risks associated with those. We had a certified industrial hygienist and professional engineer, Mr. Francis Offerman, review the project, in particular for its emissions, indoor emissions of formaldehyde and the related health risks. Formaldehyde, as you may know, is a toxic chemical. It is a carcinogen, causes cancer. And by his analysis, looking at the typical types of materials that are used for both the residential component, as well as the hotel component of the project, he calculated that for the residents, the risks are probably about a hundred-and-twenty-five in a million. For the workers at the hotel, it would be about eighteen point four cancers per million. The health risk, the standard generally used is ten in a million, and above that would be significant. He also did identify some mitigation measures that would bring those numbers down if they were incorporated into the project. The, the legal issue is whether or not that's new information that needs to be assessed now that the specific plan EIR was finished in April of 2018. And in his comments, Mr. Offerman makes clear that he looked at a study that came out in July of 2018, it was presented at a conference. He's very well up on these things. He was instrumental in the creation of the current Air Resource Board standards that apply throughout the state. One of his home studies was one of the fundamental pieces of that, Mr. Offerman, that is. So, this is new information, which actually that study indicated to him as an expert that, that even if you comply with the Air Resource Board standards, you're still gonna get some significant formaldehyde emissions, even if everything that goes into the building is in solid compliance with those CARB standards. And that's the, the main thrust of his comments, that even just complying with the CARB standards is obviously a good thing rather than not complying, but it's not enough to eliminate the issue. And for SEQA, that's what she would be required to analyze, and in this case, it does come later than the EIR that folks are, the city is planning on relying on. And the exemptions that were cited don't apply in that case. So, that is the concern that we have proceeded to bring to your attention. And with that being said, I'll leave it at that. That's the main issue. And we do expect to talk to the applicant in the next couple of days, and we do hope to, to bring those mitigation measures to bear and hopefully resolve the issue.
Thank you. Please take a seat, and if there's questions from the council, we'll have you readily available. I will ask the applicant to come up and give the applicant a moment to speak, and then we'll continue on to, I think we have more, four members of the public signed up to speak. Good afternoon.
Thank you, council, for your time to consider a project that I believe is truly critical to the long-term prosperity and economic viability of our downtown. And most importantly, I believe, meets an immediate need for attainable housing for our urban workforce. As an urban infill developer that's been concentrated on urban housing that meets the needs of our workforce, I can say that I truly believe in advancing the environmental sustainability goals of our state and of our city. And we intend to uphold every environmental policy that is required by our state and by our communities. So, I just want to say that we have that intent as an utmost priority. We have, I, I believe that our values and our intentions are aligned with the appellant. We had a very productive and positive meeting earlier today with the appellant. We work very closely with some of their members, and we intend to continue that good working relationship throughout this project. So, I believe that it is in our best intentions and our best interests to move forward together productively, and we intend to do that on this project. So, I really would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We're gonna proceed to public comment. Madam Clerk?
I have four speakers on this item. The first is Michael Laslow, Rosanna Herber. Michael here? That was you, thank you. Rosanna Herber, then Michael Alt, then Eric Christiansen.
I would just like for you to know that was an error. The number was read wrong. I'm here to speak on the childcare issue.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Herber. Yes.
Michael Alt on forty-three, and Eric Christiansen on forty-three.
Vice Mayor, members of council, City Manager Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. This is a critical project, and I think one of the things that we've seen is not only the investment in downtown Sacramento, but really finishing what is truly important in providing more housing downtown. This project provides not just more housing, it provides more hotel rooms. We're making significant investment in the Convention Center on the east end of downtown, and this project will complement that. The central portion of the K Street Mall corridor has needed some investment for a long time. Nikki has a wonderful project, and I think this project would complement an incredible direction that we're seeing downtown. So, we ask that you would support this project, move this forward. It's the right project in the right time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alt.
Eric Christians?
Good evening. My name's Eric Christian. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. Thanks for giving us a few minutes of your time tonight. I just wanted to come and speak to what you're really facing here with regards to this quote-unquote "environmental concern" by this law firm. The email that I sent you earlier today lists the pages and pages of where these modern-day Sierra Club rivals, it appears, are filing their lawsuits all over the state, abusing the SEQA process in the name of quote-unquote "protecting their members." What this really is, is an attempt to extort the owner into a project labor agreement, which has worked out so well for the city of Sacramento. Something we'll be highlighting empirically with regards to your bid results in the coming weeks, because we know exactly what it's been doing. Exclusionary agreement's been excluding people, and you've been suffering the consequences during your bid process. That's what this issue's about. These people go around the state extorting owners because they can't do it in an open and competitive free-market process, because nobody in their right mind agrees to a project labor agreement. They actually have to extort them into one. So, this is quite, this is demonstrably true. There have been numerous articles, including the Sacramento Bee, which has called these labor unions out for the abuse of the SEQA process over the years. That's exactly what this is. I give them credit for showing their face here, because it is so, actually, it's so disgusting to abuse the SEQA process like this, to actually show in person is quite something. Please research exactly what this is about, not formaldehyde, it's about agreements. And once they get the agreements, the concerns go away. We have three hundred and eighty-five instances of it at phonyuniontreehuggers.com around the state, and it really has to end. And I would hope that public entities around the state would call them out for exactly what's going on here. Weigh the, weigh the merits of the project on their merits, and not what special interests in construction trade unions are demanding that the owner do that they normally won't do in a free and open marketplace. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Madam Clerk?
I have no more speakers.
No more speakers. Okay, we'll turn this over to the council. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is a little bit unusual for a variety of reasons, partially because we, we don't see a lot of projects anymore since we've changed our planning, development, entitlement process. And I think that's sort of a testament largely to our staff and the community. This project is a very significant project. I don't know where Nikki went, or, I don't see, there you are, in the crowd. But I, as I represent downtown in the central city, the building on the corner was my branch of Washington Mutual before it moved, and the building's been vacant really since then. That's over a decade now since the financial crisis, when the forced merger with Chase happened, and they had just moved prior to that. These buildings are blighted. If we still had redevelopment, we would probably have tried to move them along, but we rely primarily on the private sector to develop. We also have a significant lack of hotel rooms in the downtown core. We have a significant lack of housing in the downtown core, and we have a significant lack of developers who have the wherewithal and are willing to take the risk to try to do really hard things, because our construction costs far outstrip a lot of times our rents, and that's been a big concern, the rising rents that are needed to justify construction. And so, Nikki Mohana has done a lot. The Nineteen J project is a tribute to that. But for all the people who say this is simply a labor issue, when I reached out to our local one-eighty-five rep, I heard from him that this shouldn't be a problem, because they work with Nikki all the time, and I had them meet, and it sounds like they had a very successful meeting today. So, I'm very confused as to why we're here on this item, if that's simply the issue. I believe the staff report covers why the SEQA appeal, as presented by the appellant, is not legitimate. And so, given that, and the staff report, and all the good work that our planning and development team and our city attorney's office have done, I would expect that if there were a lawsuit on this, just like we've won the last three or four SEQA lawsuits, we would win this as well. And so, I'm prepared to open and close the public hearing, reject the appeal, and approve the project. That's a motion.
Second. It's been properly moved, the item's been properly moved, the hearing has been requested to be opened and closed, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Harris. Are there any members of the council wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll call the question here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, measure is approved. Appeals rejected, to be clear. Yeah. Okay, we're gonna continue on to items of the public hearing, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight. And I know we've got a long night ahead of us, so we'll ask to move judiciously through this. Madam Clerk?
Item forty-four is delinquent charges, special assessment for sidewalk repair on private property and related costs. And I just want to ask staff if they have anything to read into the record. Okay. Yes.
It's, we're waiving presentation. It's been moved by Councilmember Ashby.
We need to open and close the public hearing.
They're seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Hanson. Any, any comments from the public?
I have no speakers.
No comments from the public? Any members from the council? All that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Item forty-five?
Item forty-five is delinquent charges, special assessments for weed abatement on private property and related costs.
If there's nothing to read into the record, I would open and close the public hearing, waive the presentation, and approve the item.
Been properly moved and seconded, and any members of the public signed up to speak?
No, they're not.
Any members of the council wishing to speak? If not, Councilmember Har-
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, oftentimes, our staff come, and they're prepared, you know, to give a presentation, and I'm sure you've done a fair amount of work, and we're ready to present to council. I just want to say that I laud your effort, and I thank you, and it's a beautiful dress. Thank you for showing up tonight.
Thank you.
And I hope you don't feel slighted by us moving through some of these issues, but frankly, they don't really require a lot of discussion, so thank you. I just want to thank staff for your hard work.
Can we note for the record that Councilmember Harris's comments were longer than the presentation that we waived?
District Three, Steve, it's District Three.
I hope we'll get you home in time for dinner. So, okay, well, with that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Item number forty-six is vacation of a portion of the public utility easement at one-five-two-five Andres Court within Council District Five, proceeding number VAC-18-005.
I'm happy to waive the public hearing, waive the, not waive the public hearing, open and close the public hearing, waive the presentation, move the item.
Okay, it's, it's been properly moved and seconded to open and close the public hearing here and waive presentation. Is there any comments from the public?
There are none.
Great job.
Fantastic. And that's a way to vacation in District Five, by the way. So, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item forty-seven. I do believe we have to read something into the record for item forty-seven.
Yes, on item forty-seven is delinquent utility service charges, special assessment.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Fadi Chaja. I'm the Building Services Manager with the Department of Utility. I would like to read into record that the total amount to be levied as special assessment as indicated in the staff report has been reduced as a result of payment received. The total delinquency amount to be levied as a special assessment is four million, six-hundred-thousand and four, nine-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Exhibit A in the staff report has been revised to reflect these changes, and a copy is on file in the city clerk's office. I respectfully request the Vice President and council to open and close the public hearing and adopt the resolution.
I would happily open and close the public hearing and move the item, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson. It's been properly moved and opened and closed public hearing. It's been seconded by Councilmember Jennings. Any members of the public wishing to speak?
There are none.
There are none. Any members of the council? Councilmember Carr?
Next, next item.
Next item, okay. Seeing no members of the council wishing to speak, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Measure carries. Madam Clerk?
Item number forty-eight is City Council Housing Authority Whispering Pines Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, a TEPF hearing, approval of taxed exempt bonds, bonds, and approval of loan commitment.
Councilmember Carr, did you wish to speak before the presentation?
Is there something you need to read into the record?
No, I think she pretty much covered it.
Say again?
I think she pretty much covered it.
She pretty much covered it?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, in that case, I'd like to open and close the public hearing and move the item. And I'd just like to say that this is a very important project. It sits on the corner of Metta View and Amherst. For decades, it's been a problem property. We have a property owner now who is very cooperative, and making sure that we rid the complex of elements that have been actually destroying it. And what this project will do, what we will do, is allow the property owner to go in and rehab the projects, rehab each apartment complex, as well as the meeting room, and give us a place to have community meetings in that project. a place to have community meetings in that project. So I am glad to move this forward.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Carr. It's been properly moved to open and close the public hearing. It's been seconded by Councilmember Ashby. And we do have Councilmember, wait, before I move to Councilmember Harris, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
I do not.
We do not. Councilmember Harris.
So I just want to be brief. Larry, congratulations on this project. I think it's, I agree, it's a very important location. Yeah, and of course, yes, SHRA, every member of SHRA for your hard work on this. These properties are so important to rehab and put those units back in play because we desperately need them, affordable units. You're doing very vital work, and congratulations, Sala, you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Seeing no more, no members signed up to speak, we will, I'll ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? Then measure carries. Motion passes. Okay, item, we're moving on to discussion calendar. Madam Clerk?
Item number 49 is strategic plan to increase access to childcare and early learning.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Gera, and council members. I'm Consuelo Hernandez, your Director of Governmental Affairs. I'm here tonight to kick off the discussion on item 49, the strategic plan to increase access to childcare and early learning. The item before you today is the result of an October 2018 hearing on childcare convened by the vice mayor. The Law and Legislation Committee heard this item on June 4th and forwarded the item to the council for its consideration. At Law and Ledge, committee members asked that specific items be considered as part of the strategic plan, including a conversation of worker healthcare and wages, geographic access of childcare, and engaging the state in this discussion. Since the Law and Ledge meeting, the council approved funding for a staff person in the Office of Innovation and Economic Development to coordinate efforts to increase the supply of childcare in the city. Josefina Natsina is here tonight representing the work group who pulled together the information on the item and the recommendations. And I will turn it over to Ms. Natsina and am available for questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Natsina, thank you for being here, and also Ms. LaFleuss for all your great work.
Hi, Josefina Natsina and Tamika LaFleuss, co-chairs of the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition, Childcare Subcommittee. Wanted to thank the council and Vice Mayor Gera, Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Ashby for the commitment to ensuring that childcare is a priority of the city, and to all the council members for making sure that this amazing collaborative effort to make this top of mind to support working families in the city of Sacramento is available. And I think that this strategic plan is the first step, and it's starting that conversation to support working families.
Absolutely. I mean, when we're taking a look at, you know, incomes, our, most of our families are two-parent, two-parent incomes, but also when we take a look at the wage gap, right? How are we supposed to expect for us to balance out with the demographics of Sacramento when those, that, the missing demographic is at home taking care of kids, as you see my art in the audience? So it's, and yours too. And so, you know, this is just a really just beautiful collaboration and moving forward and investing in your people, which is what we're supposed to do here, right?
So thank you all for the effort, and we want to continue to work with you.
Yes.
Your constituents, thank you as well.
Yes, and thank you for the little people too, because this is who we really don't aspire to.
Well, thank you very much for the judicious presentation today. And with that, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
I have one speaker on the side, I'm Rosanna Herbert. Thank you for coming up again.
Yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you. This childcare issue is something we as a community have to figure out. I should say, I'm Rosanna Herbert. I'm on the SMUD board, but I'm not here speaking for the SMUD board, although SMUD is very engaged in working with community partners to provide childcare. And today, we signed a 15-year agreement with the UC Davis Health and Sacramento State to open a childcare center on Folsom Boulevard. It will be available for 208 children, which doubles the size of the current SMUD Lighthouse Childcare Center, and it will open in early 2021. So I just wanted to say that we're very excited about the commitment that this council and mayor is making to childcare, and we want you to know that there are others who stand with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Trustee. And before you leave, I do want to recognize that you guys sent out a press release about that development and that partnership, and rather than shutting the facility down, you guys expanded and figured out how to get more into that. That deserves a lot of credit. Let's give her and SMUD a big round of applause, and Sac State and UC Davis for committing to childcare. Thank you very much. Okay, since there are no more members signed up to speak, we'll move on to the council. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't get to be on Law and Ledge, so, you know, I don't get to be in the grind on this one, but I know that Vice Mayor Gera has championed it through Law and Ledge, and I want to thank you for that. We have little people, so this is especially important for us. We have, you know, reasons for doing this. But, you know, we want everybody to have access to childcare. When you have a little one, and several of us up here do, you know what a big challenge it is, and I don't think it's something you forget. So for everybody else up here who's got a little bit older children, I know they remember, and we really want to do this. So I'm proud of us. I think this is good teamwork on behalf of all of us. Eric, great job shepherding it out of Law and Ledge, and Steve, great work too. I'm proud to stand in the front row to cheer you guys on now that you're here at the full council. Can't wait to vote yes. Good job.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Harris, a member of Law and Ledge.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I also want to give you kudos for bringing this issue a lot of attention and bringing it to Law and Ledge so that we had a chance to look at it. I have to say, I'm feeling very fortunate because this particular childcare center is on Folsom Boulevard in my district, in District 3. And it's a tremendous boon to the area for the workers at Sac State and UC Davis and SMUD as well. You know, it did come out of the Lighthouse project at SMUD. It was probably a big push to get this thing started. And 208 children is a lot of kids for people who are working parents. What to do with your child is always a very tough decision. It's an expensive decision, and it's a conundrum that most parents face. The fact of the matter is that we have childcare for only 20% of the children of working parents in Sacramento County. That's not a very big number, so this takes a pretty significant bite. And I'm very proud of all three of the organizations that are collaborating to use this facility on Folsom Boulevard. It's actually an excellent location for a childcare center. And Sac State actually bought the building, and there'll be significant renovations. It's going to be a really big amenity for the entire community. And I would like to say that although Sac State and UC Davis and SMUD will avail themselves of this facility, there will probably be excess space for people just in the community at large as well. So I look forward to it opening. It'll probably be in 2021, I believe, and look forward to the change. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris, and for your support during the Law and Legislation Committee. Councilmember Carr?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm not on Law and Ledge either, so I need to get oriented on this. The recommendation is that we pass a motion directing the city manager to develop a strategic plan. And then in the back there, a bunch of, there's a pamphlet that has a whole bunch of activities that undertake place. Is that the plan?
No, the plan is driven by a number of priorities, and if you look on page two of the staff report, those were the items.
The guiding principles?
Yeah. And what this does is this is giving, if this is approved, council will be giving direction to staff to basically look at the details of how the strategic plan should be rolled out. And thanks to the council's approval of also a staff person in economic development to be a childcare coordinator, that will come back to the council.
And this plan is to increase the supply of childcare spaces. Let me ask this, to what level?
That's a good question, and I think that's part of the strategic planning process because, as you've mentioned before, benchmarking is important to understand what level, how many. And childcare is a business like other businesses, so it's about understanding what we can do to address that business.
You really can't develop a plan until you know what the goal, what the objective is. And if we haven't specified the objective, how can we come up with a plan? Is it, so I think, I'm not opposed to the city manager doing this. What I'm opposed to is not doing our job and telling them what the outcomes are.
Well, that's a good, that is a, that is a good question. And the purpose of developing the, approving this and moving forward with it is so that this body gets a better understanding of what those goals and priorities, what the appropriate outcome could be, and what the staff person that is, that we're going to have on board, we're going to get more detail on that. Yep, hold on here, after Councilmember Carr. Yes.
Mr. City Manager, can you develop a plan if you don't know what the outcome is supposed to be?
Sorry, I'm learning the technology as well. So what we can do as part of developing the strategic plan is that when we have the staff person on board, we can bring something back to this council and progress in terms of, you know, some of the priorities that we set forth and some goals for this council to consider as well before we finalize.
Well, what I would like to see is some options of what the results might be. Are we trying to make sure that we have enough childcare spaces to cover each individual in the city and the county and surrounding areas, and what the costs are associated with those options, so that we as a council can make a decision about where we should be headed? And then you can develop your strategic plan.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. First, I think that this is all, this all requires a lot more context than I think it's been given, Mr. Carr. If you look at the staff report, in 1985, Mayor Rudin convened a similar task force, and then out of that came some city efforts to create childcare. We actually had a childcare coordinator for a long time. During the recession, we eliminated that position, and I think we stepped back from our efforts to help create affordable, high-quality childcare throughout the city. And as, honestly, a lot of our families have continued to grow, we've realized that we still do not have enough childcare. And I think as much as all of us want to be experts about that issue, we need the staff person and Mr. City Manager, I was going to ask you what the hiring looks like on that, to work with the community and the experts to develop goals, kind of like around Black Child Legacy. When it started out, really, it was trying to get at the same questions you're asking, but I think we're not as far along as that was when it came to us. But we're starting a process like that to help at-risk kids, working parents, and the working poor really find a way to access childcare. And I think that is very laudable. There are a lot of children out there whose families don't have other folks who can watch their kids while they're at work, and those kids are some of the most at risk for whether it's falling behind in school and having their own performance suffer, but they're also at-risk kids otherwise for being preyed upon and just falling behind. So I'm very much in favor of this, and I think the childcare coordinator, our economic development staff, will really help put a little meat on the bones to this. Mr. City Manager, what do you think the hiring process looks like for this role?
I want to ask Mr. Michael Jasson to come up to talk about the status of that recruitment.
He usually sits over there, so I was looking there, but he was hiding on this side.
Well, the council chamber was well positioned with attendees this evening, so, good evening, council, Vice Mayor. So we're currently in the process of drafting a kind of ideal candidate position statement. We would share that with the stakeholders to make sure we have their input. We're hoping to have that complete within the next two weeks, then working with HR due to kind of hiring. We're actually simultaneously going out the door with a number of economic development managers, but this one, as has been noticed, would be focused on childcare.
That's awesome. I think that that person is critical, and then continuing to build this out. A lot of our plans start like this. We know we need an effort. We fund the effort. We begin to strategize working with the community. And so I don't think this is that different, with all due respect, Mr. Carr. I just don't think we're as far along as we normally are when we see things like this. And so we're just at the nascent piece of it. I would also say, Mr. Gera, you've done a phenomenal job as a father leading this. I noticed on your task force, you had Supervisor Serna, who's an admirable proponent of early childhood issues on the first five commission and everything else. But I think almost an unfair burden has been placed on the mothers to advocate here, and I think we need to create more roles for fathers to step up and encourage them, because these are very strong, smart, capable women. But I also believe that they can't do it alone. And as much as you've helped lead that effort, I know that there are other people in the community that should be stepping up as well. And so I applaud the women and girls leadership for really helping to lead the way here, but also I recognize there are some people not here to support you in doing the work, and this is a call to action to them to step forward and to help. So the dads out there, we're looking for you to step up as well. And then the final thing, and I raise this at Law and Ledge for Consuelo, for our state lobbying team, we continue to have a lot of issues in our region related to DSS and the licensing of these facilities, pushing them out of business. And I'm just very frustrated by that. It feels like something where we should engage, whether a lobbying team and some of the members, to go meet with the new director of DSS or maybe the governor's office, because they need to understand that when they shut down childcare here and don't help facilities find a path, they're not only hurting state workers, they're hurting families that otherwise don't have access to care. So every time one of those facilities gets shut down, it really causes a ripple effect and exacerbates the shortage. And I think we need to make that case to the state and to see what they can do to help us provide technical assistance rather than punishment, because a lot of times, these cases, these licensing cases, you have to go to court, you have to get lawyers, and rather than providing the technical assistance that might help prevent these issues, operators that are already on thin margins are just being penalized, and I just don't think that's right. So I'm happy to support you. I really grateful for your leadership, Mr. Vice Mayor, and continue the work, and thank you, all of you, for your efforts.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson. I have Councilmember Shanier, then Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of comments really quickly. First of all, I want to thank the advocates for coming in and supporting both you and Councilmember Ashby in really pushing this issue. This is an important issue for the city. And Consuelo, thank you, because I know this kind of got dropped in your lap because we didn't have any infrastructure to deal with this, and that's something that we really need to move forward on, is to build the infrastructure. I don't know that we're, the goal, I think, for me, is aspirational and pretty clear. It's affordable and accessible childcare for every young person that needs it in the city. The need is different as we go across communities. I don't know that we're going to hit that need in the foreseeable future, but we need to move along that road. But we can be aspirational in the goal, certainly. I want to note that this is really part of something a lot larger as we move forward in the city and a lot of the things that we're doing. When you think of the youth development plan that we adopted, when you think of the transportation issue of having young people have free public transportation, when you think of the pop-ups where young people are going to have safe places to be at night that are educational and learning experiences, and you think about that continuum really of 0 to 24, what do we need to do for young people to be successful and to really have a sustainable city as we move forward? This is a vital piece of it. This is the start of that marathon. And so I'm very supportive of this. I look forward to getting someone great who can work with us, but this isn't just about one person working for Michael. This is really about how we view this issue as a city, how we view what we're doing for young people comprehensively, and we need to connect all those dots. This can't be done at the margins. It's really got to be done in line and in alignment with a lot of these other things that we're doing. And I look forward to the day when we can look back and say, this is where a young Sacramento resident started, and this is where they ended being successful because of all these pieces that we've put together. So thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanier. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I really don't feel in need of a lecture about the importance of childcare, especially from the community that I represent. And I'm sure Rosanna Herbert is going to understand this, that it's very important for the board to specify the outcomes that we're looking for, to put it in writing, and all of us agree on it. Mr. Shanier offered one possible goal, affordable and accessible childcare for all who need it in this city, I guess. And maybe that's a good outcome, but it's not stated. In order to develop a strategic plan, you really have to be specific about what it is you're trying to do. to do. And if you don't do that, you end up running around in circles. Make no mistake about it, I am not arguing against childcare. I'm just saying the council should state what result it's looking for, so the staff can do its job and develop a strategic plan. And we'll resource that strategic plan. But it should have the outcomes. In the case of Black Child Legacy, the outcome was 20% reduction in infant mortality in the next 10 years. That was stated at the very beginning. Here's what we're trying to do. And that allowed that organization to structure itself so it could deliver those results. So it's a, we're not arguing about whether or not it's important. We're arguing about how the council should approach it. And, uh, in my way of thinking, our job is to set the outcome initially and let the staff do its job. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
That's good. Well, thank you, Member, uh, thank you, Councilmember Carr. I think Councilmember Ashby could also clarify the recommendation and, and motion.
To, uh, move the item. And I appreciate Councilmember Carr's input. I actually think Councilmember Harris probably came the closest to giving us a stat, which was that we're only at 20, providing 20% of childcare in the Sacramento County. So perhaps the best direction could be, for now at least, that we want to increase that number from 20% to something more reasonable. But I can't give you a number, because in order to give you that number, I would need to know the need. So maybe you can quantify that for us and come back with an early report, so that we can answer this question for Councilmember Carr, too. But that being said, I'd like to move the item.
Thank you very much. And I will second that item. Uh, and since there are no members signed up to speak, I'll close by saying this. The, the item says that we're directing the city manager to develop a strategic plan to increase access to childcare and early learning. And that way, and to serve, uh, we have these guiding principles that are identified in the staff report for high-quality, affordable childcare in the city. And this is a big goal. This is an enormous task, because it's not just one entity. It's not just the city. Uh, it involves the County Board of Education, involves the First Five Commission, follows our community partners. And to do this, to actually, um, change this, uh, the, the, this, uh, shortage that we have, it's going to require a lot of, uh, coordination and effort. And I think why, uh, also, there was a strong effort to put, uh, some staff resources in the budget. I do want to thank all our colleagues here for voting to support staff resources in our Economic Development Department to put a childcare coordinator, because it's going to take all those pieces. So looking at how do we help reduce the cost of childcare? How do we help providers in maintaining a business that's got a very tight margin? We heard it took three institutions today just to be able to save one and expand one. And how do we increase, uh, you know, the quality? We want to make sure that if our kids are going to be in a place away from our home, that they also are having that quality associated with it. And finally, the thing that was added at Law and Legislation Committee is, uh, is also the workforce. Uh, you know, the personal experience. Uh, the early childhood education was the pathway out of, uh, working in agriculture for my mother to start a career that wasn't in the baking hot sun, to provide an opportunity for other people. So I think there's a lot of ways that the workforce, how do we help them at the same time? Uh, but we can't do it if we don't have a basic plan, and if our staff doesn't have direction from the council. And this is what, uh, I'm asking for your vote, to get help, uh, start that, this next step forward to addressing the childcare shortage here in Sacramento. And with that, I'll, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Measure Cares. Thank you. Oh, oh, I will ask, are there any abstentions? One abstention. Very good. So that'll be, uh, one, two, three. Six, one there. So that's a six oh one vote there. Madam Clerk, Measure Cares. And I do, uh, with that, I want to thank, uh, all of our, uh, volunteers who have helped out this, in this effort. It was a long road getting here. Uh, let's give all our volunteers of, uh, the Women and Girls Coalition a big round of applause for their work on addressing childcare issues. Madam Clerk, you can read the next item.
Item number 50 is funding for the North Natomas Community Center and Aquatic Complex Project.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. I'm James Christensen, Facility Manager. I'm here to present today on the North Natomas Aquatic Center and Community Center. Uh, this has been before council numerous times. However, you have not seen a presentation on this since the feasibility study. Once I'm completed giving the overview, I'll turn it over to Fran, and she's going to talk about funding options. Getting that started?
Technical difficulties here. Technology's great when it works.
I think it helps to have it. I mean, I could talk about it a little bit, but I think it really helps to have the slides.
Vice Mayor, I could take this moment to say happy birthday to my son. He's in the back row of the chamber. Fifteen years old, Tyus. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
No place he'd rather be than the council chambers at 15 years old, I'm sure. I mean, maybe. He had donuts this morning for breakfast and cake last night, but Rick wants you to have more cake, so.
We can offer Amy's.
You want Rick to sing to you? He's really good at it. We have to kill time, so.
I'll offer Amy's.
Yeah, we have cookies. You want cookies, Tyus? Come on.
Yeah, I think it did a big upgrade.
Nope.
It's the fastest he moves, right there.
Look at him, he read it. Councilmember Jennings, you want us to lead us into happy birthday?
Yeah.
Whichever one you like the most.
Do it. I'm ready.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Tyus. Happy birthday to you.
All right. Are, uh, members okay with taking public comment first?
All of it?
No, just all of them.
Oh, this item, okay.
So Vice Mayor, Gary, I have this item.
Madam Clerk.
I have four speakers on this item. The first one is Angelica, um, Talika, then Ed Perez.
Hello, good evening.
Ms. Tila Chair.
Hello, good evening. Uh, nice to see you up there. And I love you all. I know Daryl is not here. He would have given me 10 extra minutes. Um, so on item 50, you know, I'm, I'm coming back on the whole Natomas thing. First, we were left out of the budget. Now we're back on the budget, or somewhat on the budget. So I wasn't really clear on this whole thing, because there was a little bit of a debate on what the school district said or not. So I took it upon myself to call the superintendent, call the school members, call labor, call everybody. And I spoke to some of you. Um, so I'm asking you to please consider not delaying this until September, October. Um, Natomas was very clear with me today that they never extended the July 31st deadline, um, because after that, we run the risk of losing the 10.6 million. Uh, I believe this is the third delay. I'm hoping that we don't have a fourth or fifth delay on this. Um, we really want to move forward. This is a project that will benefit not only Natomas, but a lot of us. I know many of you have been very supportive. Thank you, Steve. And, you know, and I kind of thought, I love it about you today in the sense that, you know, everybody thought you were cray when you came onboard, and you had all these projects, and people couldn't ride. And you're still cray, but the projects were wonderful. So I feel like, I'm not saying you're cray, but I'm saying that this project is the same thing, where it benefits all the districts, not just Natomas. And in Natomas, we really are excited about this. We're excited to be back on the budget. We're excited that we're being heard and that we're not just being left out there. So, Vice Mayor, I'm hoping that we will have the support of all of you for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tila Chair.
Next speaker is Ed Perez, then John Sandich.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Gera, and, um, councilmembers. My name is Ed, um, Perez. I'm a resident of North Natomas. And I'm here tonight to, um, support the North Natomas Community Center and Aquatic Complex Project. And, uh, I would urge, uh, the council to, um, support moving forward with the project. It, it's, it's an ongoing project. And in fact, I think about, uh, I think last week, we, uh, just inaugurated the, uh, the dog park that we have to relocate as part of this project. And as the last speaker mentioned, uh, the folks in Natomas are looking forward to this. Um, you know, just on a side note, uh, this week, we have five days of 100-degree weather, and that trend's going to continue with climate change. And an aquatic, um, related amenity in Natomas, um, is, is definitely welcome. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is, the last time this item was before the council back in June, mo-most of the folks on, on the dais, uh, were in support of the project. So it's gratifying that staff has come back with three options for a funding mechanism. And I urge you to support the staff recommendation for option number two, which is the inter-fund loan to be paid by year-end, um, um, fund balances. Uh, so with that, again, I urge your support, uh, for this project. Um, it's long overdue. It'll be the first Olympic-sized pool in the city of Sacramento. It'll attract a lot of economic, um, benefits. I think we already, already have a commitment from some competitive teams to, from Davis, to actually, um, uh, use this facility. And with that, I just want to thank again, uh, Councilmember Carr for your service to, uh, on the council. Thank you.
Next speaker is John Sandich, and the final speaker is Alyssa Lozano.
Good evening, Council. Um, from what I understand, the closest Olympic-sized pool is in Davis. And, uh, that's a lot of revenue that Sacramento could be benefiting from if we had one here in Sacramento. Not only to justify, uh, the use of the pool, but, uh, for people in North Natomas and around Sacramento. Uh, I have family that live in District One. And not that I don't want them to come to my house to go swimming, but I think the pool would be beneficial for the community as well. So, uh, I urge your vote for the, for the pool, and, uh, thank you for your time.
And our final speaker on this item is Alyssa Lozano.
Hello, thank you so much. Um, it's good to see you guys all. Um, I appreciate you letting me speak. Uh, so I'm here on behalf of Natomas Chamber, and also, um, as a resident of Natomas, north and south, in a sense. I own homes in both. Um, and I can tell you, I've been a resident of Natomas my entire life. Um, I remember when it was nothing but a lot of fields. Del Paso was a two-way, um, street. So, um, we have come a long ways. And, um, I can tell you, from what I do on a daily basis, I'm a realtor with Remax, and, um, I talk to buyers all day long, all the time. Um, and one of the things that I pride myself on is integrity. And so, you know, I always am honest, and I, you know, feel like I'm very forthcoming when it comes to, to things. And, uh, one of the things I mention to buyers when they're coming to buy a home here in Sacramento, and I try to sell Natomas, because I live there and I love it, um, is that we're, you know, we're growing. We're going to continue to, um, continue to grow. And part of that is having the aquatic center. Um, I think it's very important for our community. And I can tell you firsthand that a lot of buyers, they do feel like Natomas is not big enough or doesn't have enough amenities that, you know, bigger cities like Roseville or other places outside of Sacramento, um, have. So I would urge you guys to, uh, vote for this. We need it, um, in Natomas, and it would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I have no more speakers, and I do have a presentation.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think we are prepared for a presentation.
Excellent.
PowerPoint reminds me of college, not working when I needed it.
So once again, good evening, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers, and City Manager. James Christensen, Facilities Manager. I'm going to go over an overview of the project, um, starting with the first slide here. I'll push that one. So we'll do some technology here.
Other way, other way.
There we go. Excellent. Okay. So, so the project is located in the North Natomas Regional Park. And as was mentioned earlier, the first thing we had to do was we had to relocate the dog park. So the dog park's been relocated. That work is complete. Next thing we're working on right now is Phase Two, which is the extension of New Market Drive. And so that's under construction currently. After that, will come the Community Center and Aquatics Complex, which is ready for construction now. So this is the proposed final design as it looks today. Um, on the, on the lower right side, you can see New Market Drive comes down. You've got the main parking lot. And then up at the top, you have the Community Center and the Aquatics Complex. Up at the top, you've got the Activities Pool for the younger children, the water slides. In the middle, on the left-hand side, you've got the Community Center Building. Then you move over, you've got the 25-yard recreational pool. And then on the right-hand side, you have the 50-meter competition swimming pool. And you have the bleachers adjacent to the 50-meter pool. And then down in the middle, you have the parking with drop-off areas. And the remainder of the buildings around the perimeter there, between the parking lot and the complex, are your offices, classrooms, meeting rooms, showers, lockers, et cetera, including the pool building. And then here in this area, this is the Natomas Unified School District's area. That includes the 50-meter pool, the bleachers, the pool equipment building. And then we were, um, we had to add restrooms specifically for, and locker rooms specifically for the school district. That was a requirement of the state architect. So next what I'm going to do is, since the last time you guys saw this was the feasibility study, um, this was the conceptual design at the feasibility study. So I was just going to compare the two a little bit for you. So as you can see here, it's rearranged a little bit. The parking has now moved mostly over to the New Market Drive. I think I went back. See how the parking has changed there. The Aquatic Center's now been pushed up. You can see we've been pushed up there. And the Community Center in particular has been pushed all the way over to the left-hand side, which now gives it good access directly from the parking lot. I think the parking lot is easier access from either, either of the streets. And this just flows, I think, much better than it did during the, um, schematic design. Um, some of the, the differences between the two, currently, the new project has 240 parking stalls, um, and there's no future stalls planned. The conceptual design had 141 stalls going in with 181 planned future stalls for 322 total. Um, the current design has the Community Center Building at 8,400 square feet. The conceptual design had a Community Center Building at 10,700 feet with future expansion. When you look at the rest of the buildings, the, um, classrooms, the offices, uh, locker rooms, et cetera, the current design, those are around 12,000 square feet if you add them all together. The previous design had them around 7,400. So if you add all those numbers together, Community Center plus the other buildings, we're a couple thousand square feet more now than we were at conceptual. Part of that is due to the pool equipment building, which, um, had to get a fair amount larger because of the amount of equipment that goes for these pools. And then also, the state architect requirement for the additional restrooms and locker rooms for the Natomas Unified School District. So that's pretty much where most of it is. There's some other ones kind of in there, but those are the big ones. Um, and then finally, um, we have onsite water detention that was a requirement. Um, so in the event of a large stormwater event, we have detention onsite. So next up, I'm going to show you a couple of renderings that were done. So this first one is of the Community Center. This is the front of the Community Center. Um, as we said, 8,400 square feet approximately. It's, um, it has a very large community room inside of it, about 5,000 square feet. I don't remember the exact numbers, but 200 to 400 people, I think, depending whether standing or seating. Uh, it's got a warming kitchen, an outdoor patio, office, restrooms. It's got a warming kitchen, an outdoor patio, office, restrooms. This rendering is the side of the community center and also the back of the community center. You can see all the large windows, which provide a lot of natural daylight, also bring the outside in, and vice versa. On the side view, which we're kind of looking at, you see that raised patio there, partially covered, that opens up right into the community center. And then on the back of it, you see that big wall of windows that overlooks a large lawn area that can be seen from inside. So they've really tried to bring the outside into the building through these windows. And then finally, where we have the raised patio, that patio is raised up a couple of feet that allows people standing there to look out over towards the aquatic center. And instead of staring directly out the fence and the bushes, they're raised up just a little bit so they can kind of see over the top, have a little bit of a view. This here is a rendering of what the entrance to the aquatic center looks like. You can see the ticket booth right there in the beginning. That kind of dark area there is where you would enter in between the two buildings. You've got shade structures there to help with children or patrons that are standing in line waiting to get a ticket. Once you go through there, you enter the aquatic center, and then you have all the buildings we've talked about before and the pools. So this is kind of an aerial of the pool area. This is taken from looking like almost if you were sitting on the roof of the community center looking out, you would get this view. So right there in the center, you see the 25-yard recreational pool. Up above that, you see the activity pool, which has activities on it. That's for your younger children. And then past that, you have the slides. That'd be for your older kids, up to your teenagers. And then in the back there, you have the 50-meter competition pool. On the right-hand side of that, you have the bleachers. And the left-hand side of that, back there on the lawn, you've got the large area for the pop-up tents that are often used during swim meets. Okay, that's what I have. I was going to hand it over to Fran to talk about the next part.
Good evening. Fran Holback in with the City Manager's Office. So we're presenting this slide because I had fielded a few questions about whether or not the council has seen this project before and how often. So rather than read through them, you can see that, you know, all the way back in 2014, staff has actually been working on this project for five and a half years. And we have come to the council on seven different occasions to present the project as it moved along. The last time we talked about it was February of this year. We asked you to transfer $2.5 million so that we could move forward into permitting. You suspended competitive bidding, and we brought to you then that the total project cost at that time was close to $45 million. And there's actually more detail in your background if you want to read a little bit more about each of these council actions.
To break down the funding, so this project has various different sources of funding. The top three, the North Natomas Finance Plan, and then the Internal Finance Plan is basically, within that finance plan, there are more than one account. So this is a loan within the finance plan. And then you commonly hear things called CFD. That's Community Facilities District. These top three are all North Natomas Development-related funds. So they're only eligible for use within North Natomas, and they have specific uses that are spelled out that they can be used for. So they total roughly $20 million of North Natomas-related development funds. Then you see an entry, the fourth one down, Natomas School District. They, on June 19th, authorized up to $10.6 million for the project. And then you show an estimated shortfall, which I have rounded to 14.4 on my speaking points versus, you know, what you're seeing here. The total project cost is at $45 million. And we have identified $30.6 million, asking for the shortfall of 14.4. That $30.6 million that we're talking about, already bringing to the project, is in addition to $1 million each that Los Rios and Natomas Unified School District brought for Phase Two of the project, which was the New Market Extension. So I'm just going to walk you through the financing plan options. Your project team worked with the Finance Department and the City Treasurer's Office and others to identify potential ways that we could close the 14.4 million, provide the 14.4 million that's needed to provide the remaining amount for construction. So the first option, one, is using current general fund balance. Approximately $27.3 million is in the balance, which is more than the 14.4 needed. Now, those general funds are also used for investing in other capital projects, for your future labor agreements, and other financial challenges that are forecast in the outer years of the city budget. Option two is what I'm going to call an internal loan. So it's a short-term loan from the Water Fund. We've worked with the Utilities Department, and they have sufficient funds within the Water Fund to support a short-term loan, and that we anticipate to be for 12 to 18 months. They do not have, there's enough money within the Water Fund that we can repay that within 18 months, and it will not harm anything they're planning to do. It would be repaid with interest in accordance with city policy. And the interest, which is currently around 2% or 2.2%, is estimated at up to $447,000 if it went the entire 18 months. If the city proceeds with a capital investment program and issues bonds to be repaid with future measure of revenue, their short-term loan would be repaid with those bond proceeds. And if the capital investment program does not occur, the Water Fund will be reimbursed with general fund balance, with the available fund balance in the general fund. Option three is an external short-term loan. They call them direct placement loans. These come from either bond underwriter, a bank, or other financial institution. The estimated cost of borrowing ranges from $589,000 to $734,000. They need to be securitized, and so there are some specific properties that the treasurer has identified that would be security. But we would need time to do an appraisal of those properties. And it would take about two months to complete. So for those reasons, since the guaranteed maximum price is valid for 90 days, that option would not meet the September 20th deadline to award the construction contract. So if council, again, if council decides not to move forward with a bond program, the loan ends up being repaid from available year-end results in the general fund. I said that before. I just wanted to emphasize that in case there was too much information and you couldn't process that. Staff recommends that option two, the Water Fund Short-Term Loan, be used to provide the 14.4 million for construction of the project. To date, the city and our partners have invested $10 million to relocate the dock park, extend New Market Drive, and then plan, design, and permit the community center and aquatic center project. And this 14.4 million would complete the capital project investment. Auto Construction, their bid proposal is valid until September 20th, although staff would prefer that council make that award sooner. The construction schedule anticipates a 16-month construction period. It typically takes about two to three weeks after contract award for the contractor to begin physical work. So a unique challenge within Natomas is there is a, within the Habitat Conservation Plan, there's a grading restriction that goes from October 1st to May 1st. And it has to do with a giant gardener stake. We have not found evidence at our site of having those present, but there is a process you have to go through to provide the proof that the regulators won't require that grading restriction on the site. We're also starting this project really, really late in the construction calendar. So to simplify it, Auto's plan is to dig a big hole in the ground and then apply gunite to stabilize the ground before the wet weather comes. And we need to provide enough time to allow that to happen. I'm guessing they probably also want to get some buildings framed and get them far enough along so that some of the other trades can work inside during the wet weather in order to accomplish the 16-month constructive period. So at this point, pretty much every day matters. We would suggest that you discuss these funding options and then provide direction to the City Manager and City Treasurer. And if you decide to proceed with construction, staff would return to council in August for award of the construction contract, transferring the various funds, and approval of the Natomas Unified School District funding agreement.
Thank you for the presentation. Since we've already had public comment on this item, we'll go ahead and begin with members of the council. Councilmember Ashby.
Well, I doubt it will be a surprise to anyone that I support the item. And you know, I've probably been holding your breath waiting to hear what I thought. You know, if it were just up to me, I would love to move forward with item one because it's money available right now and we could just go. And as you heard Fran say, every day is important. But I know, I have heard from many of my colleagues that they don't feel comfortable with that, and I want to be a team player. It's why I voted for the budget. It's why I was so thrilled to see Jeff's items go through today and vote on the Consent Calendar Day, which was chock full of a bunch of really amazing things for our city that we can all be proud of. I just want to be in the mix of that, too. And so my ask would be for my colleagues, first of all, I'm excited to hear what you have to say today. I know some of you might like one better than two or two better than one. Three is a non-starter. Ultimately, two does become one if a bond doesn't pass anyway or doesn't move forward. So my ask today is that you help me direct the City Manager to come back to us in August as the staff has recommended with item two laid out in a strategy, you know, and maybe entertain one a little bit and give us an idea of what that would be. But I think we need to move forward. Natomas Unified School District, I owe them a big thank you because they voted unanimously to partner with us on this. They're a little school district, so not like the ones you guys deal with. They're not big like Sac State Unified. They're not big like Twin Rivers. It's a little school district. And, you know, they passed a big bond, and they made this a big priority. And the reason they did is because they don't have a public pool at their big high school. Endercombe is one of the largest, most populated high schools in the city, and this, we'll share this facility with them. That means they'll share the expenses with us. Los Rios, while they haven't joined in on the pool yet, did join in on the road. They put $1 million down for Phase Two. So did Natomas Unified. The Natomas Finance Plan has already paid, I think, about $3 million. Is that right, Fran? Is it higher than that?
It might, sorry.
I don't know if those were just.
It might be more. It might be more than that.
At least $3 million already for the plan reviews, for the architects, for the design drawings. And every one of those times, we came back here for approval, which was the timeline that you saw. And I am very grateful to my colleagues for helping me get this far, but I need your help to get across the finish line. And I'm excited to hear your thoughts and ideas today. And I want to thank our staff because if you, if I could just have this one moment, for our staff that's been working on this for the last five years, would you guys just stand up for a second? I don't want to name you all, but Jason, and you guys stand up really quick. They work on this, and they meet weekly with Fran and James, and they have done such a great job. And I am really grateful to you for every minute that you guys have poured into this project. Thank you so much, and James and Fran, too. And I want to thank Auto Construction and BCA Architects because we wouldn't be here without them either. So it's exciting to me. Time is of the essence. I need your help. The final vote on this would come in August, and we can, you know, vote then. But I, there are 18 building and trade affiliates with bids waiting to be funded on this project right now that Auto Construction is holding on to. And I'm anxious to see those families, those men and women hard at work in my district building this great amenity for the city of Sacramento. So I want to answer any questions you guys have for me, too. And I want to urge you to give direction to the City Manager to also support the staff's recommendation here today, and thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't feel behooved to speak to every item on the agenda in respect to the other time of my fellow council members and the public. But some controversial votes deserve explaining. We're talking about $14 million that we would be allocating one way or another for a swimming pool in a very kind of upscale neighborhood. And people in my neighborhood might say, well, look at our needs. We need to fix the Martin Luther King Facility Library. We need to extend the landscaping on 24th Street. We need to build a childcare center next to the library. Look at all of these needs we have. How can you possibly vote to move something forward that would appear to be sort of a nice-to-have? Here is my rationale for seconding the motion to move it forward. And I view it a lot like I did the art project at Golden One, that we put in on that art project, $1.5 million, and we got $8 million in benefits. That's a good deal for the city. In this project, we're putting in 30% of the cost of the facility, and we're getting 70% put in by other people. And at the end, we will get a first-class aquatic complex that will benefit the whole city. So it's a no-brainer. But it could be controversial because I'm from an area that has a lot of needs, and I'm voting for something like this. So I view it as a business deal. And I think if any council member bought a deal like this, where you got 70% of the financing from somewhere else, and you were going to provide an amenity to the city, I would most definitely support it. And the only question that I have is this joint-use question. What does that mean? And how often will the general public have access to the facilities? How often will these other people, other entities, have exclusive access to it? I don't expect that to be answered tonight. But when we vote on this to go forward finally, I'm going to need to have that answered. Because I will be selling this to my community as people from my community can go to this complex. And if the school district has this thing locked up from 7:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, and folks can't go and swim 50 yards, then I will have a hard time supporting it. So I've talked to Fran earlier, and she's going to work out the joint-use agreements. And I would expect it to come back because we are, one way or another, the city, even though the money is dedicated to Natomas, we're putting in a lot of the money, and the district is only putting in 10 million. So school district is only putting in 10 million. So the joint-use agreement must reflect the total amount of dollars that are being allocated, and the city should get its fair share. So that'll be the only thing I'm holding you to, Councilmember Ashby. That, and why are the stands not facing the long way of the pool as opposed to being at the end? But we'll talk about that in the design phase.
Vice Mayor, may I briefly?
Councilmember Ashby.
Okay. Thank you. Ollie, we'll get you a thorough answer when we come back. But just to give you some, you know, comfort right now, the school district is only even insuring themselves for the Olympic pool. So they have asked for a waiver in their own agreement to, for them to not have to insure the remainder, so the other pool, the water slides, the kids' play area, all of that stuff, the school district is not even involved in. And we didn't, everything that the school needs to have approved has to be approved at the state level by architects. We only took the Olympic-sized pool even forward. And even that, they won't have access to 24/7. But there is an agreement coming forward that will firm all of that up. But just to give you some level of comfort, I just want to know, they're not even insuring themselves for the full facility.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Carr, did that answer your question? Councilmember Harris.
You know, I took the seat on the council in December of 2014, and this aquatic center has been on the table every day that I've been sitting in this seat. So it's a very long-term and very mature project at this point. We have approved set of building plans. We've got a guaranteed maximum price. All we're really lacking is the resolve to pull the trigger on this project. And I'm there. I definitely support it. I agree with everything that Councilmember Carr said. This is a good deal. You know, it's highly leveraged. And if you look at every project that we do in the city, certainly in my district, you get some seed money. This is true of what we just approved in Northgate. A million dollars for Northgate. We're going to leverage that. We're going to get grants. We're going to build that into a funding source to do substantial projects. And Ms. Ashby has done just that, with monies available in her district because she has different sets of circumstances up there, being it's a newer part of the city, and she has community finance districts, and she has available funds that are generated in district. finance districts, and she has available funds that are generated in district. That being said, this is a citywide amenity. And it will be really quite a lovely space. Again, North Natomas does not have a community center. I think it's the only district that does not. Is that correct?
I think it does.
That's right. Sorry, Rick.
On the A.
We'll work on that. So, you know, there's a lot of pluses here. So, I'm definitely in support of the aquatic center. I think its time has come. A lot of work has been put into this over five years. And we're, we're right there. We've got a good builder. And I like the guaranteed maximum price. I like the way the funding has been pulled together. So, the only real decision here is how, how to actually pay for it. So, it's no secret that I'm kind of averse debt. I, you know, I'm a general contractor, and I have lived my life more or less on a cash basis. You know, I like to save. I'm a big saver, and I like to pay for what I can afford. That being said, of course, you have to finance big projects now and again, like your own home and so forth. But right now, in the general fund, we have the ability to pay for this. So, my particular aspect here, my, my thought about it is, I would like to pay cash. Why incur debt service if you've got cash on hand? So, that would be my direction to the, to the city manager. That would, that is the option that is most appealing to me. I can live with number two. I would favor number one. But I would like to support Councilmember Ashby and all the work she's put into this, knowing that this is, in fact, a good, good business deal. It's good for the city. It'll be a great amenity. If you think about it, think about the waterfront projects that we will use a bonding mechanism and incur debt service for every single project that we build, you know, along the waterfront. Good projects, a good way to go forward. But here, we have an availability where it's already highly leveraged, and we have cash on hand to bring it home. So, that's my feeling. I'm definitely in support. Thank you, Ms. Ashby, for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, I know that this project has come up a lot, but I think there's a couple important things that haven't been said that are worth saying, and a couple of things that have been said that are worth underscoring. It's rare that we see a public project that has so much, so much support from other sources of funding. I know when we've tried to do our own public projects here, it's, it's very unusual for a school district to contribute, especially to such a significant amount of the project. It's about 25% of the project budget is being contributed by Natomas Unified. The participation of Los Rios, I've never seen before. And I know that they get some benefits out of the road and some other stuff, but I think that is very significant. The presence of CFDs to, to create this, I think, is very unique. And only in the new growth areas do we have these community facilities districts. But that was a bargain that was struck a long time ago, that if we were going to grow, we would create these so these areas could help support the basic services that they needed. Some of that infrastructure, some of that operations. And the evidence is that during my time on the council, other than the Centene deal, I can't think of another major opportunity to invest in North Natomas that we've had other than this. And, you know, that's only seven years, Jay, in your much longer time. Maybe there's been another opportunity. But I can't think of it. But what I can think of is when the Golden One Center came along, Natomas and Angelique supported that, even though it was going to be a major shift in resources and attention. And we continue to have to fulfill the promise to find a good reuse for the site. When we had to figure out what to do with the Convention Center, the Community Center Theater and Memorial Auditorium, Angelique and Natomas was very supportive of those projects. Those together are almost $800 million, probably $600, $700 million, just those two. But even on smaller ones, you know, we saw a lot of passion for the Powerhouse Science Center out of District One. And that was a leap of faith that we got done together. The Sofia and the Clara, two very important projects for the arts. I know you were very supportive of those, Councilmember, and I appreciate that. I haven't forgotten that. And in the end, you know, whether it's the Two Rivers Trail or the Sacramento River Trail, new fire stations in District Three, libraries that we need to do, I've seen you step up to help us get projects done across the city. And I think this is a very important opportunity to help show that we are a one city, not eight cities with different councilmembers, you know, but one city together. And so, that's why during the, the budget proposal, I proposed a public facilities bond, a city facilities bond. I was contemplating this very project in that, just like I was thinking of the Martin Luther King Library, Allen's Library Project, the fire station needs we have, the other park needs we have. That $50 million won't maybe get us as far as we would like, but it's in combination with other resources. And I think there is some very important things that happened in the discussion around these other projects. And Councilmember Carr said something about the Golden One Center, I think, about how it benefited other parts of the city. But when we were doing some of these other projects, whether it's the Sofia, the Clara, or Powerhouse, we created an equity plan to make sure that underrepresented people from around the city had access, low or no barrier access to the facilities, particularly our kids. And what I'd like to see, Mr. City Manager, is that as we come back, we really show the public, just like these other facilities. And, and I wasn't here when we voted on the Crocker, but over the weekend, I was at our district day for District Two, Four, and Six. And seeing the families there enjoying that facility that the city helped partially build reminded me that while these institutions may be in one particular district, they really do benefit the community as a whole. And I, I find that very compelling and moving. And as much as I worry about how much money might go to one project or another, when I step back, I think, we've figured it out. We'll continue to figure it out. And this is a burden in the hand that has so much going for it. We've got a great contractor, Auto Construction, a guaranteed price. We have high-quality jobs being created, and we have a high-quality product to serve the community. So, if you can bring back an equity plan that shows us how each of the districts can benefit, particularly those kids who might be from Twin Rivers or from Sac City Unified or one of the other opportunities, populations that we want to try to help serve because they've been underserved, I think that's really important. And that can be through programming as well as just basic access. Because there are a lot of kids in our city who don't know how to swim. And I know we have a lot of pools, and we've worked hard to maintain those pools. But I think finding a way to teach kids who might not have access to swimless is another example of that. But in the end, too, I know that our budget deal was a very complicated deal. And Mr. Treasurer, do you know when and how the process related to the, the bond proceeds will go? I know we asked for two, please come up. But do you know what the timeline is? Because that impacts my, my opinion about the finance plan options. And assuming we're moving with a sense of purpose and we're like going, like you're gangbusters to do.
We're actually working with Bill Sinclair in the Real Estate Division, identifying things. One key component we need to do is we need to identify the size of the bonding. That's critical.
125 million.
Okay, 125 million over two years.
Well, that's the first one, yeah.
Yeah. So, we're in the process of identifying those. The problem, the problem exists, as I mentioned before, is that without the Convention Center being completed, that's a major piece of collateral. Other than that, we only have a few parks and a few fire stations, which are, you know, two- and $3 million lots. So, we're looking at, what are we looking at, Brian? Yeah, seven or eight assets right now that we're going to have to...
What's the timeline look like?
We're looking at identifying, we're probably six months out to getting the appraisals done, and then another six months to actually creating the master lease plan. So, we're at 12 months.
Is there a way to tighten that up?
Well, you can pay a premium to have things done, for sure. Yeah.
Well, I guess, you know, we're a month into when we had this conversation about trying to create this flexibility. So, we can work more on that. That's not on the agenda, so thank you. I guess, when it comes to financing this, I would prefer not to pay the $400,000 in interest, if possible, to the Water Fund. And maybe there's some way to sort of split, split it a little bit. But if we have sufficient cash to manage over the period of construction, and we can get the other partners to pony up, I, I think that that would be the most optimal. And if we have to incur some interest to our own fund, I think that's fine. I don't know if there are other funds available that are not enterprise or that we could use to, to borrow and pay into. That might be more beneficial. But I, I think that either of those, as Mr. Harris said, are probably appropriate. But ultimately, I don't see a way that we don't do this project. So, you know, doing it the most efficient way, the most thoughtful way, and delivering for the, for the public in providing the equity plan, that's, that's my goal. And I thank Councilmember Ashby and all the partners who came along. And I know that, you know, others of you have looked to me to support your projects, and I will be there just like I have been for Ms. Ashby, and you have been for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Shanir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, a few things. First, I want to say this is a good project. And there's no question about the need. I want to applaud Councilmember Ashby for her persistence in getting this done. It takes a long time to do that. I particularly like a few aspects of this, which I hope we can replicate as we spend other bond funds going forward, particularly the leverage piece. I think that's critically important. And not that we should make it a requirement, but I think as we think about what a template might look like for applying for those funds or going through the process, that's a key piece of it all. So, I want to applaud that. I think it's really important to do. I have no doubt about the need and the lack of pools up in the area. Everyone deserves to have that. So, with all that, I do think it's a good project. My challenge on it, and I've been consistent for a while on this, is we've set up a process around Measure U Funds. And these would be capital funds coming out of Measure U to repay either the general fund loan or a loan from the Water Fund. And this, basically, at this level, if, if we continue along the lines of what Mr. Hanson proposed, which was 100 million, 100 million, and 50 million for the city pieces, this takes close to a third of the city piece. Again, I'm not against this, but I do think that we've set up a process for the Investment Committee in Mr. Jasso's shop and this Community Advisory Committee. And I would propose that we go back to them for their recommendations on this before we okay a third of the money used for city. I think that's what we've made a commitment to the community on, and I feel pretty strongly about that. So, that's, that's where I am. I don't have problems with the city, with the project itself. I would like, and I assume I'm in a minority on this one, but I would like, when this comes back, to see the operational costs of this. I don't know if, that we've seen that at all, and I'm not sure what that is and how we, where does, where do those funds come from as well. I think that would be important. So, that's my piece. So, I, I know it will come back in August at some point. I know the mayor's asked for that, so he can participate in the conversation. I'd look forward to that. But also, if we could get possibly some timelines of Investment Committee meetings, also the Measure U Advisory Committee, and when they might be able to take this up, if, if the council wants to move in that direction, I think we could still meet the timelines that have been set out before us.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanir. I have Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. I think I'm saying thank you. Off now. Gotcha. I'm on now. Good. So, we will get used to this whole process. We apologize for the technical difficulties, but we will get used to this. Councilwoman Ashby, you ought to be applauded. Five and a half years you've been working on this. We've had seven presentations, and 70% already paid for, with 14.4 million left to get. And so, you have done a great job, and I applaud you for that. You have to have been on the council for, for a minute in order to be able to, to make something like that happen. So, I applaud you, and I applaud the community. There is no question in my mind that in the city of Sacramento, that we need an aquatic center. And specifically, in North Natomas, you need a community center to go along with it. And so, the plans that we saw are incredible. While I, too, am concerned about the seating, that's small in comparison to all the good things that we saw with the recreational pool, the competitive pool, the slides, you know, the community center, and every, how the whole thing was set up. It's inviting, and it's something that will benefit the city of Sacramento for a long time. And I know that it will benefit the city of Sacramento because how we put the MOU together and the joint use contract together will tell us how it will benefit the city of Sacramento. And so, that all the communities, as Steve said, all the communities will have the opportunity to participate in this wonderful amenity that will be coming to Sacramento, one that we need, so that we don't have to go to Davis, and we don't have to go to Folsom, and we don't have to go to Roseville, and any other place that we've been going to, taking our money there as opposed to bringing it into the city of Sacramento. So, that's the good things. And, and so, I'm very supportive of this, this project. A couple of things that just kind of give me pause is the fact that I don't understand how this project does not go through the things that we've set up. I don't understand that. And so, if in fact, we're not going to take projects like this through the system of the Measure U Committee, and the Finance Committee, and the Budget and Audit Committee, and anything before it gets here, then I think we probably should not have those committees. Because we got a letter today from the, from the president of the Measure U Committee. And it was a very detailed letter. I thought it was a very well-written letter. And she questioned it, too, as far as what is their role if it's not to take on projects like this. And so, I think we have to answer that question. And I would ask the city manager to make sure that we're very intentional about making sure that those committees have the opportunity to vet these types of projects before they come to us. So, that's one of the things that I wanted to make sure we do. I'm also concerned, just because of the 7/31 deadline from the Natomas Unified School District. And I'm hoping that's a soft deadline. But it's, it's a deadline that kind of scares me. It's $10.6 million. And, and if in fact, we don't act within the 7/31 deadline, which is right around the corner, then maybe the request is 25 million as opposed to, to 14.4. And so, that kind of concerns me. And, and so, I'm hoping that that deadline can be renegotiated so that we don't get to that point. As far as the financing is concerned, I would give direction to you, city manager, to take a look at Option One, take a look at Option Two, and bring back every available option that's to us, whether it costs us money or whether we pay cash for it. I'm not as much in favor of paying cash for it at this point in time, only because I am dead-set on making sure that, and, and we did this earlier. We recognized literacy today, today, for the building of literacy movement in Sacramento. And yet, we have two libraries in Sacramento that don't support what we're trying to build. And that's the North Sacramento Library, and that's also the Martin Luther King Library in Meadowview. And so, with that said, I want to make sure that we make those investments in those libraries at the same time that we're making this kind of an investment. And so, I don't want to take our cash and utilize all of our cash, whereas we can't make up the commitment to do what we've all agreed we want to do. And so, that's why I want to look at all options within the finance plans, Plan One and Plan Two, as you bring this back sometime in August. That's pretty much my comments, as far as giving direction and also telling my concerns as far as the, the process to make sure that those committees that we set up are properly utilized, and they understand why they weren't in this particular case. But anyway, congratulations. I think it's a great project. I'm looking forward to the vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I forgot to say something. Councilmember Shanir and Jennings reminded me about, but I don't think there's actually a motion on the table. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You said the vote. I thought you meant tonight. You mean in August. Okay. Okay, good. And I hope NUSD doesn't leave us in large. I don't think they will, because we're having a very strong discussion tonight. And I, I think this suffices. But Councilmember Shanir and I had a little bit of this debate during the budget process. And I have a philosophical position that I think... and I have a philosophical position that I think I wanted to state earlier, and both Councilmember Jennings and Shanir brought it up. I think we have our traditional job as councilmembers, which is to invest in city services, is to maintain the general fund, invest in facilities. And when I made the proposal of the budget plan that I put forward, and you all ended up supporting that, and part of that was bringing this back before the end of July for this kind of conversation. One of the things I said, and I know there's a lot happening, but I think our traditional duties and prerogatives involve investing in city services. If we're going to take $5 million to build a fire station, that may be Measure U funds, but I don't believe it is up to the Investment Committee or the Measure U Commission to make that decision for us. We are elected by the voters to invest in our city facilities, our parks, our libraries, our fire stations, et cetera, and I see this as in that traditional prerogative. I am loathe to erode our prerogative around the city facilities bond, and when we proposed it, I proposed it, I said that these projects should go outside of that process for that very reason, that I don't want to have to consult an investment committee if Councilmember Guerra wants to rebuild Station 10. If we had to go through that process with the CRCIP bonds that built the Waters Library, I don't know what would have happened, but I know that's a great resource in the pocket. And so, I want to protect our traditional duties, even as we give the Measure U Commission and Investment Committee, whether it's the Affordable Housing Bond, whether it's the Economic Development Bond, or other Measure U monies that we did set aside for grants for nonprofits and stuff like that, there's plenty of work there for them to do without having to let it bleed over into the things that we have to do and we're elected to do on a normal basis. And so, I see this as really part of that. That's why I don't support it going through that process, nor any of the other city facilities. And so, I'll just respectfully disagree, but that's the thinking for me. But the rest of it that we identified as Measure U Committee, I totally agree. You know, they have plenty of work to do. We have plenty of asks, and I don't want to give them things that we're supposed to be doing as part of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Council-
I just would like to- While we may disagree or not, I respect the points that you just made. I just don't know that we, as a council, have gotten to either one of our points. And so, for us as a council to collectively come to that point, that's a conversation we need to have, because obviously, right now, there are different points of view for us to look at. And so, we at some point in time need to have that conversation in order to understand what is the direction that we're going to. Councilmember Carr says it to us all the time. Understand the outcome that you want, and then we'll determine what the process is to get there. And so, I think we need to all agree what that outcome is that we want and how we want to get there.
Before the recess, I did make a request to the city manager to bring those processes back so we could actually make a decision officially and vote on what direction, so that it was clear, because it is muddled. That we agree on.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. I'm going to go to Councilmember Shanir here, and I'm going to ask colleagues if they could respect the speaker's list and just punch up. Thank you very much.
So, very quickly, I just want to say one thing. You said we don't want to look to them to make decisions. They're not making decisions or making recommendations. So, I want to be clear on that, whether it's for city facilities or anything else. The committees that we've set up, one, the Investment Committee is just vetting. It's not about recommendations. That's my understanding with findings, and the Community Advisory Committee will make actual recommendations back to the council. I think it would be fine if all we had was $50 million worth of projects. We could easily spend $100 or $150 million on city projects in the next year or so. So, we're still going to have to make choices. Ultimately, that's our responsibility. There's no question about it. Steve, you and I are going to have this debate for a long time, I assume, until the council makes a decision, which is fine. I just think it's important of a project of this magnitude, and I will say, I don't know, the mayor sent us a letter about timing and also other projects he wanted to bring. I would make the same case on the libraries in the north area, the library in the south area, other projects that we do, because there's context to all of these projects. There's context to how we spend our money, what the immediate results that we want are, and how quickly we can do those things. So, that's where I am, and I'll look forward to the discussion, and when the council makes a decision about process, that'll be it.
Councilmember Ashby?
I did, but I wanted to respectfully give you the opportunity to speak first so I could maybe summarize everybody's comments.
Well, thank you very much. My comments here, again, I think any significant project's going to take a lot of time, and obviously, this started well before I joined the council. I think I share some of the concerns that Councilmember Jennings and Shanir brought up about the process, and when, at least when I was out stumping for Measure U and talking to the community, the point was that we would have an advisory committee and an investment committee to give full participation on how we would provide recommendations to the council. And, you know, I think the issue is the size of this amount. In respect to the whole project, I think Councilman Carr mentioned it, that's a great deal. You know, I mean, 30% to 70%, that is an amazing deal, when you look at that amount of the project. But we have to look at it in the context of our city budget and our city availability. It's budget constraints. If there's anything I learned at the Sac State's Master's Program in Economics is that everything's based on budget constraints. Sure, if I get a, you know, 60% off of Ferrari, I probably still can't afford it. So, you know, the issue is about what we do with the resources we have. I also think, you know, I always prefer not to pay money on my money. So, if we're going to pay cash, then let's pay cash and not pay interest. But again, that goes on balancing. Sometimes we use credit. Sometimes we use credit because we need to balance those needs. And I think that we're in a unique position where this project has moved along, but at the same time, we've made a commitment to the public about a new process of budgeting, and that's the conflict that I have here. So, I want to make those comments because those are the concerns that are troubling me here with moving forward. No question about it that you have a community that needs an aquatic center, that needs a community center. There's an area that was added to my district when they did redistricting over 10 years ago that doesn't have a community center, and the closest to one is about six miles away as well. And, you know, that's a challenging, too. So, all of our districts have significant needs, and we all need to work together so that everyone in the city feels that level of balance. So, I think that the point that we've gotten to this point is that commitment to try to find those solutions. So, for Mr. City Manager, I think the concerns that I have are in that context. You know, if we're going to move through this process, when you're bringing something to the council, then we need to clarify what is going to go through the Measure U process or the Investment Committee. I think that when we voted on the budget, if there was anything clear about how we would spend the bonding or what we would look at, is that we were unclear on how to do it. So, there isn't agreement yet on that component, and we should have that conversation. I think we need to come to a council into an agreement about what's going to go through this process. As a courtesy to the mayor, you know, because he's not here today, and I did receive his letter, and Mr. City Manager, you received this letter from the mayor as well. It looks like it was last week when I was out of town. But as a courtesy of the mayor, I'm going to actually provide direction based on his letter to request that you come back with this aquatic center project on, what does he say, August 20th, with a few of these other important facilities. And I think he wants to put forward a proposal, and I think he has a fair point about, you know, if we're going to make this, provide some equity. We have some immediate needs. I could not be here asking for support on a day when we voted for the literacy movement and trying to create that literacy movement and not support the efforts of the public libraries in both areas that have some of the worst literacy rates in our city. So, I think that conversation needs to happen, and so, I'm going to request that, give direction that you bring back a proposal on August 20th with the items identified in the mayor's letter to the city council. I think if we're going to make that decision, I hope that all our colleagues are going to be here to make that for our city. I think kudos to you, Councilmember Ashby. To get to a project this size takes a lot, and it takes a lot of partners. But at the same time, I want to make sure that when we make this decision, that we're doing it in the context of our entire city as well, our budget constraints for our city. With that, I'll go move to Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you very much. So, first of all, I want to thank you all for the broad support. I heard everybody say they support the project. I heard everybody say, actually, surprisingly, I heard a surprising number of you say you might be more interested in item 1 than item 2, and some direction to the city manager to look at both or a combination and bring us back something. As to Jay and Rick and your idea of Measure U, I have some feelings about that, but the only thing that really matters is it doesn't work on this timeline. Flat out, it doesn't work on the timeline for this one. My personal feeling is all of the other priorities that were yours, that we voted on in June, didn't go through this process either. So, if it was good for the goose, it should have been good for the gander, and we could have sent everybody's everything to the committee. We didn't do that. We passed, you know, $1 million for bus passes and bike paths and parks and community centers and parks and everything, and I voted for all of it. I think it's all fantastic. We sent none of it to this committee. We voted on it here, and this item is older than all of them put together. It's five and a half years old. It started long before we even had Measure U 1, much less Measure U 2. And none of these options in front of you today are Measure U dollars. One of them is the potential for maybe Measure U dollars later, if this council agrees to do something and includes the pool in this, but none of these are Measure U. So, even the balance fund is year-end revenue. So, we're not talking about Measure U, and I don't believe there's any requirement to send this forward. And I would respectfully disagree with Eric a little bit. I agree we were clear as mud on our original thing, but Steve fought hard to the point that he believes in here, that we need to retain our ability to build core city structures, and I agree with that. Not just for this project, because this one's way down the road. We could make the argument that that one was fully baked, and the next one, oh, should go to the committee. I don't agree with that, because you guys are going to need fire stations, you're going to need community centers, we need to circle back around, and we're going to need the ability to do that quickly. There's already a lot of restrictions. Putting this to another group and bringing it back, we will lose it. We don't have time for it. And as to the timeline, I heard one of you mention a particular date. I'm going to ask that Fran, you gave very specific information today about the construction timeline and about the guaranteed maximum price. I believe the discussion here tonight and the broad support you guys have all stated is going to be enough for Natomas Unified to feel that we have committed today. But for the remainder of those pieces, and it is very difficult to hold one of these together with this many funding partners. When you're bringing 70% and the city's kind of the one that's waffling, and it's only the 30%, it's hard to keep those partners on board with you. So, Fran, whatever date you guys need, whatever date the city needs in August to bring forward, I don't think, you can't guess who's going to be here and who's not going to be here, but I do think the mayor isn't going to be gone for a full month. So, I'm sure whatever you guys can work out, I'll leave that to the city manager. I appreciate the broad support. I appreciate the idea that we can move forward. I'm grateful and excited. I am laughing, because I already got three texts about the bleachers since you two brought it up. So, I think it's just arranged wrong in the slide they showed you, but we'll double-check and make sure the bleachers are facing the right direction. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. Well, Mr. City Manager, this is an item as identified for discussion, and so, I hope you got as much clarity as you wanted from that discussion.
I have the direction I need. Absolutely.
Great. Thank you, my colleagues. That concludes this item. Madam Clerk, is there any further business on the agenda?
There is. Item 51, staff has asked that the council continue that item. It is a receive and file, but I need your direction.
I'm going to ask for a motion to continue this item. It's been moved by Councilmember Ashby. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Harris. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Item number 52 is Housing Authority Approval of Option Agreement and Loan Commitment for Rental Assistance Demonstration, RAD Phase 1 Project. And I do have one speaker on this item.
I'd be happy to waive the presentation. I know staff has been waiting a long time. It's a great opportunity for the city to embrace this federal program, and I believe we have one speaker, so I defer, but I'll make a motion to approve the item.
And I do have a question on this.
Councilmember Shanir.
I don't know. So-
Madam Clerk, do we have anybody?
I have one speaker.
One speaker. Let's do a public comment, then we'll come back to the council.
So, Robert Copeland would like to speak on item 52.
Well, actually, I wish we didn't have to go through the RAD program, but we need to because it cuts HUD funding for renovations and new apartment complexes being built for, like SHRA, I wish we do that also. And that's my comment for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland, for your brevity. Councilmember Shanir.
Great. Thank you. So, I understand this is a program that's going on around the country, more or less. Do we know what the impact will be on SHRA employees as we move forward? There's no light.
So, one of the things that we are looking at is the organizational structure of the Housing Authority. We are looking and evaluating all of the different positions and what will be needed under the RAD program. Our guiding principle is to make sure that we try to either train people into new jobs or kind of move them around where they can best fit within the structure, because it will require a different skill set for some of the management function.
So, when would we get information about what that looks like? As you figure it out?
Yes, we're working on that as we speak, and so, by the time we actually conclude the first RAD one, we will know that. So, that's before the end of the year.
So, will we see the new structure prior to actually making changes?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanir. Since there are no more members signed up to speak, I'll ask for all those in favor to signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Measure passes. Seconded by Jennings. Seconded, right? Yeah. Madam Clerk.
So, we took care of item number 53 at the beginning of the meeting, so we'll move on to council comments, ideas, questions, AB 1, 2, 3 reports. And I do have a board and commission appointment to read into the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Shanir.
May I read that into the record?
Hold on, Councilmember Shanir. We're going to read the appointments to boards and commissions in the record.
Thank you. To the Stadium Area Public Financing Authority, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Jennings, and Councilmember Guerra. Thank you.
Well, welcome. We have more work, gentlemen.
That is to the Stadium Area Public Financing Authority.
All right.
Same here. Okay, Councilmember Shanir.
So, one comment and one request. Usually, there would be, there's currently scheduled or was scheduled a music in the park for Curtis Park on Sunday evening because of the 105-degree weather. We are going to postpone that until the fall. So, anyone who was thinking about going to Curtis Park Sunday night, don't. The other thing, and this is a request for the city manager, Mr. Conlon, you know, we all saw the point-in-time count that came out last month and really showed some relatively dramatic increases in many areas here. One of the striking pieces of that was approximately 200 families living in their cars. And so, I've asked before, but I know that there was a capacity issue among staff. I'd like us to look at some of the safe parking zones that are happening around the state. San Diego is probably one of the better examples of it, and where it's not just safe parking at night, but it's safe parking at night, hooking people up to services. And I know they've done a good job, and I can send you some people that I've talked to down there. But I'd love to see a report come back to the council in 45 to 60 days. But I'd love to see a report come back to the council in 45 to 60 days of what it would cost for something like that to do. I will note that what they do in San Diego is they use public lots that are used during the day by folks. And then at night, when everyone leaves, is when they're using it. So there's no, the difficulties and challenges that we have citing homeless shelters is something that I hope we wouldn't have to go through on there. I'm sorry. So what I'm asking for is a report back on some of the safe parking zones for homeless families. We have about 200 homeless families in the city, according to the point-in-time count. I think that's something that we can get after pretty quickly.
Yeah, I just want to speak to that, our intern who's from UCLA. If you'd stand up, you'd get a chance to see what an incredible young man.
Give a minute for Councilmember Carr to freak out. Okay, go ahead.
So he has already gone to the San Diego Safe Zone. And we have a report that we'll give to the council, give to Mr. Conlon as well. And tomorrow, they're on their way to the San Jose Safe Zone. So we are in the process of getting all that information that we can to the process of how they deliver it, the costs associated with it, the success, what are the obstacles in setting them up, and what are the best places, the best practices associated with setting them up. And we'll be able to give that information to the administration so that they can help them to complete their report. So we've been on that and are looking forward to getting you what you want.
Great. Thank you very much. The next speaker in the queue here is Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Pro Tem Ashby. A few announcements. There's a community meeting tomorrow for the general plan update. Wednesday, July 24, 6:30 p.m. at Clooney Center, 601 Alhambra. Screen on the Green is coming this weekend. We'll be showing Spider-Man Into the Verse. This Friday, July 26, at Glen Hall Park, 5415 Sandberg Drive. And again Saturday, July 27, at Gardenland Park, 310 Bowman Avenue. Both films will start around sundown, roughly 8:15, and there'll be free popcorn available. The Taste of East Sacramento, a very popular event, is this Saturday, July 27, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Greek Orthodox Church, 600 Alhambra Boulevard. Tickets are available at tastoeastac.com. And there will be free bike valet available. And there will be a back-to-school health fair this Sunday, July 28, from 10:00 to 4:00 at Oak Brook Park, 3341 Sowed Away. There will be free school supplies, bounce houses, and carnival games, health and dental screenings, and lunch will be provided. Also, a couple of quick announcements about pretty big projects that are happening in D3. The McKinley Vault project, this is for the benefit of my colleagues, is well underway. And I would say that our staff are managing it nicely. It's almost half dug already, so we're ahead of schedule. There's been really minimal impacts to the community. So I'm very excited about that. You know, this is a well-thought-out project that's moving along so far quite nicely. And also, the flood control projects in the south of Natomas area along the Garden Highway are also underway. These are really significant projects to bring our flood protection to 200-year. And we are also embarking on projects to widen the Sacramento Weir and Bypass, along with the Fremont Weir widening. We can get to 500-year protection in the city of Sacramento. This is very significant. As well, projects are starting on the Sacramento River East Levy this year. So great progress as far as flood protection for the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
That's great. Also, Spider-Man Into the Spider-Verse is a great movie. You'll have a lot of fun with that one. It is a good one. Plucky Bomb's Never Wrong. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Reference to our previous discussion, it's more than the mayor who's interested in bringing back proposals on those libraries. MLK Library for sure, and the one up north as well. If we're going to do this extrajudicial process, we may as well get those critical infrastructure issues that are needed that can't perhaps wait to get through this Measure U and investment committee. Movie night, Steve Jones Park. First time ever, movie night at Steve Jones Park. We're going to learn how to train your dragon. It's going to be this Friday, July 26. We'll be there with the popcorn at 7:00. The movie will start at sundown, probably around 8:30. That's Steve Jones Park, How to Train Your Dragon, this Friday. And Steve Jones is located at 2331 Casa Linda Drive. Thank you, Vice Mayor or Mayor Pro Tem, whoever's got the...
Councilmember Jennings. And Councilmember Carr? That's a great impression of Councilmember Jennings.
I only do that when he's not here.
Councilmember Harris, I love the name Screaming on the Greens. Screen on the Greens. Okay. I like, I like, I like both of them. I like both of them. I do. But anyway, I think that's very creative. Very creative. And I like that a lot. I think it draws the attention to bringing people out of their house and into the parks where they can enjoy a movie under the stars. And so congratulations. Good job.
Councilmember Jennings, to be honest, I have to attribute that name to Steve Cohen, my predecessor.
Okay. All right. Good.
And actually, probably Sue Brown is the one who coined it.
Okay. So I heard Councilmember Chenier say that they're going to move their concert to another date when it's not so hot. But on July 26, Friday, July 26, we're going to have Jazz in July, the last Jazz in July concert at the new Willie Castone Park. We enjoyed you to come out and listen to the smooth jazz of Doug Martin. You can bring a jacket, a blanket, and a lawn chair and enjoy an evening with all the neighbors from the Valley High and the Green, from Greenhaven and the entire community. So come on out on the 26th. It'll start at 6 o'clock. Doug Martin will be the artist, and you will enjoy a good evening of jazz.
Be cooling down by then.
It should be.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. For District 6, quick announcements. We're still going to have our Food Truck Mania on July 26, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Food Trucks. Our office will be doing our office hours that day. Also, National Night Out's coming up here on Tuesday, August 6. We're going to have a lot of households we're going to try to visit and communities we're going to try to visit in District 6. But everyone is welcome to join us at the Avondale Glen Elder Neighborhood Association and George Simms Center at 5:30. At the peak of the heat, we're going to have an ice cream social indoors with air conditioning. So we hope you'll join us for an old-fashioned ice cream social at 5:30 at the George Simms Center. Our first, save the date, our first District 6 movie night at Tahoe Park's going to be August 23. It's part of the Food Trucks event that'll start at 5:00. But then as soon as the sun goes down, we'll have Bring Your Lawn Chairs and Picnic Blankets for the movie night. With that, want to remind folks that this Wednesday, tomorrow, the 24th, at 6:30, we have our Fruit Ridge Manor Neighborhood Association at the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. Thank you, everyone. And that concludes the council comments. Madam Clerk? Are we on?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have public comments for matters not on the agenda, and I have 18 people signed up to speak. I do want to remind folks that you do have two minutes to address the council. And our timer tonight is flashing, but it is accurate. So when you see it on the screen, it is accurate. Our first speaker is Kyle Williams, then Noah Davidson, then Pamela Marquez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before the public comment, I do want to remind the council and the public, Madam, Madam City Attorney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but during public comment, it does not allow us to engage in anything that's not agendized for discussion. So this is an opportunity to hear the public, and I encourage us to listen to the public. Thank you very much.
Kyle Williams?
Why, thank you. And I'd like to say thank you for donating your time or being paid for your time or being a citizen, whatever you do. And each position is different. Thank you. I just want to start off with a quick question. I think I can ask this. I don't know if you can answer this. Is, are we, is this town of Sacramento set up with Verizon to go forward with 5G already? Has that already happened? Did you ask the town of Sacramento before you did that? Do you realize what 5G is? Have you guys given this some thought? From what I understand, I mean, five cities west of us, which are highly technologically more advanced than Sacramento, have already said, no way. Please look into this. This is nuts. Secondly, people out there, I beg the independents and Republicans to come in here and speak. I've been here twice, and I've noticed democracy is oozing from the Democratic side. And my hat's off to you for being Democrats mostly and contributing and whatever, I'm assuming. I beg the independents and Republicans to show up more, please, folks, so that we have a diverse train of thought here. It seems as though it's kind of one-sided. And I'd like to thank Mr. Harris and his people for taking my calls and starting to work on minimizing leaf blowers. I can't imagine not going forward with something that, I've been down here for 15 years, and 60 to 90% of people don't want the use of leaf blowers. So, and again, I can prove this. I've looked into it. I've analyzed it. I can share this data with you. I'm looking forward to doing that. And again, it seems really silly that we're using leaf blowers all the time, particularly this time of the year where there aren't even leaves. And if we thought of the word leaf, what it means? Leaf? Leaf? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Noah Davidson, then Pamela Marquez, then Hannah McMahon. Noah here? Oh, thank you. And feel free to line up if you would like to.
Hello. Good evening, council. I'm here to speak on 5G again. First thing, kind of shocked me tonight, you spent quite a bit more time talking about a pool than you did in the city council meeting where you were discussing the deal with Verizon to become one of the 5G, first 5G cities in the world. As the previous gentleman just stated, I wonder how much you actually researched the topic before doing. So, and it's alarming, at the very least. So I just have a couple of questions for you all. And I understand that you do not have to answer these questions, but you do have the option to do so. So it's your choice. First of all, I would like to know which of you voted in favor of making Sacramento one of the first 5G cities in the world? Let the record show that the council is not willing to answer the first question. Next, I would like to know if any of you are willing to tell us how much time you spent researching the health effects of radio frequency radiation before voting in favor of 5G? Again, let the record show. Council is not willing to answer basic questions. Lastly, the World Health Organization has classified radio frequency radiation as a possible carcinogen. In a recently published article from The Lancet, one of the most prestigious medical journals in the world, states that RF radiation is now proven to cause a number of biochemical and physiological effects. Why do you think it is acceptable to expose your constituents to this risk explicitly against our will? That's what I expected. Oh, one last question. Where's the meeting we were promised last month? It's been over a month. You said seven to 10 days. Where's the meeting?
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Pamela Marquez, then Hannah McMahon, then Arrow McMahon, then Sean Cox.
Clerk, we'll help you with the projector here shortly.
Upside down.
Good evening, city council. My name is Pamela Marquez. In June 2017, the city of Sacramento agreed to the first-of-its-kind public-private partnership with Verizon to put Sacramento on the map as one of the first 5G cities in the world. This agreement was not put out to bid, and the public largely was not informed about the agreement, nor did it have the opportunity to express their opinion on this agreement. According to the June 6 city council video, where the council unanimously voted in favor of the agreement, there were only five days between announcing the agreement and the city council approving the agreement. In this video, members of the council repeatedly say the city needs to be willing to take risks. But who is really being put at risk here? We are. The people living near the antennas, the people exposed to dangerous radiation inside their homes against their will, the people who live in constant fear for our health and the health of our children, the people whose property you have devalued with your reckless and selfish decision, the people who had zero say in this agreement or the placement of the antennas. You have sold out your constituents. Shame on you. And according to this article in the Sacramento Business Journal, you got hoodwinked. The article also states Verizon is hiring workers from out of the area with poor track records for safety and accountability to install the antennas in our area. This may explain some of the permitting issues we have found. You relinquished your authority and sold out your constituents for peanuts, and Verizon hasn't even, hasn't even delivered those peanuts. It's been two years since the agreement. Thank you. Shame on you, city council.
Our next speaker is Hannah McMahon, then Arrow McMahon, then Sean Cox.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council members. It has now been about seven months since the city of Sacramento and Verizon installed a very powerful cell antenna in front of our home, five feet away from our property line. Seven months of worry, seven months of not knowing whether or not we are harming our children by staying in our home, seven months of not knowing whether or not their development is being affected, seven months of sleepless nights. I come before the city council tonight to ask, how is this considered acceptable? We have brought our worries and our concerns to our elected officials. We have done our due diligence, done everything we can within our legal rights. What have we been given in return? We have received few answers to our questions. We were promised a meeting that has yet to happen. We have been promised answers that we have not received. Seven months. How long could this take? Every day that passes wears on myself, my husband, and my family. The worry that comes along with this alone is enough to feel like a violation of our basic human rights. This antenna was placed near our property with absolutely no warning and without our consent. What choices do we have? Sell our house that our family worked extremely hard to buy at a discounted rate due to the property value going down because of the antenna? To move to another neighborhood, just to turn around and have another antenna installed right out front? The FCC no longer responds to us. Verizon has stopped communicating with us. The city council has not given us much useful information in months. Again, as our elected representatives, how is this acceptable? There are multiple reports around the country and around the world of cities that are taking steps to halt the expansion of 5G until there is further testing. I understand all of you wanted to be one of the first smart cities in the world, but I ask all of you, at what cost? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Arrow McMahon, then Sean Cox.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and city council members. Here we are again, another Tuesday night, another city council meeting. Starting to wonder just how many of these meetings we'll have to attend before anything actually gets done about our situation. Received an email from Rick Jennings yesterday, and we absolutely appreciate the work that has been put into this by his office. I don't want you to think we don't. But once again, none of our questions were answered, and the responses not have anything to do with our particular situation. This note states that the city cannot regulate personal wireless service facilities, which include small cells based on the facility's environmental effects of radio frequency emissions if the facility is operating in compliance with FCC regulations. What if our antenna is not within the guidelines set by the FCC? The permit done for our antenna unfortunately is missing this information. What about our property values? My brother Noah and I have been attending these meetings for at least three months now. We still have not received any of the information we have requested or any of, any answers to our questions. The last city council meeting before the recess, District 67, City Councilman Rick Jennings stated that his office would be setting up a meeting on this topic at the Robbie Waters Center in seven to 10 days with experts attending that would be able to answer at least some of our questions. It is now the 28th day since that promise was made, and we still have no word on when our community is getting this meeting. In the past few months, Mr. Jennings has also brought his concerns to us that Noah and myself are the only constituents that have reached out to his office about the health and safety of the 5G expansion project. I'm left to wonder, has your view on this changed while you're riding down Windbridge during the Fourth of July parade? Fourth of July parade, did you notice the amount of his 5G safe signs in your constituents' yards? Did you notice how many people came to our 5G awareness booth on the Fourth of July? Since the recess, there's been a handful of investigative reports on our local news channels about cell antennas, the negative effects and the concerns of the people. Did you see them? Every day that goes by, we gain more support from our community. Every day, the number of your constituents that become concerned about 5G and the negative health effects that might come with this new and tested technology grows in the City of Sacramento.
If you're commenting, your two minutes is complete.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon.
Our next speaker is Sean Cox, then Patty Lukowicz.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council members. One of the major problems with 5G that not many people seem to understand is the placement of small cell antennas so close to people's homes. According to City Sacramento's webpage on 5G safety, and I quote, "Radio frequency emissions from antennas used for cellular and PCS transmissions result in exposure levels on the ground that are typically thousands of times below safety limits." If you go to the FCC source that this quote was taken from, you can see that this quote specifically refers to antennas that are 50 to 200 feet above ground level. The antennas in our neighborhoods are being installed on top of light poles at roughly the same height as our two-story homes. That means we do not have the 50 to 200-foot vertical distance buffer. We are living directly in or very close to the main transmission beam of these antennas where exposure is at its highest. According to statements from FCC, as well as permits and warning labels for the antennas in our neighborhood, exposure can approach or even exceed the FCC safety limits at or near the main transmission beam. Additionally concerning, permits for some of the antennas in our neighborhood show that safety limits are not being considered at heights above ground level. This is not a scenario that has come up very often with previous generations of wireless technology, meaning we are going to be exposed to largely unprecedented levels of radio frequency radiation, significantly higher than thousands of times below FCC safety limits as referenced by the City of Sacramento. It is either completely ignorant or purposefully misleading for the City of Sacramento to reference information that clearly does not pertain to the situation at hand just to ease people's concerns. We want the city's webpage changed to reflect the truth about the exposure 5G will bring to us.
Next speaker is Patty Lukowicz, then Stacey Maddox, then Judy Mitchner.
Hi, welcome. My name is Patty Lukowicz, and I live in the Pocket Area, District 7. Hi, hi, Rick Jennings. I'm not a scientist or an engineer. I'm not a doctor nor a lawyer, but I am a concerned parent and grandparent who wants to know if what my family is being subjected to is safe. Members of our group have been asking for months for Verizon, the FCC, and especially the city council, the City of Sacramento, to provide evidence that the specific conditions we are being subjected to are safe. None of these parties have been willing or able to provide this evidence. The only logical conclusion we are left with is that none of these parties have the specific evidence. Over these past few months, we have found plenty of evidence suggesting that we will be harmed by the antennas in our neighborhood. Hundreds of credible studies and thousands of experts are warning about the dangers of wireless radiation, specifically 5G. We have provided much of the evidence to the city for you to review. Where are the specific evidence that we will not be harmed by the antennas near our homes? All we have received is generic statements regarding FCC guidelines. These guidelines are over 20 years old and have been heavily criticized by thousands of members of the scientific and medical communities. They are also among the least restrictive in the world. China, Russia, Italy, Switzerland, Israel, and several other countries have all limits 100 times lower than ours. The exposure some of us will receive from the antennas in our neighborhood will certainly exceed those lower limits. None of the information we have seen inspires confidence that we will not be harmed by the antennas you are installing just feet from our property. The solution to our concern seems fairly simple. Provide the information or data that there will be no harm to my children and grandchildren as a result of installing the antennas-
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete. Thank you for your comments.
Or installing them until you have evidence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Stacey Maddox, Judy Mitchner, then Rourke Vane.
Hi. So, we're here again to recap. We all keep mentioning the meeting that we are very much looking forward to having in District 7. It's been mentioned by neighbors and people who are next door. It is something that we're trotting out there because you offered it to us, and we're really looking forward to that, to offering information to our neighbors. So, we don't want you to forget about that. I know you're being beat up here today and maybe rightly so in some instances, but that meeting is important. So, I just want to remind you that we are really ready for that to happen. Also, I'm not going to stand up here and talk about the symptoms or the health risks. That info has been covered in here well enough, and you're unmoved. But it is safe to say that in the interim, no information has come out that states that 5G is safe at all. On the contrary, more and more municipalities throughout the US and the world have banned 5G from their communities until it can be proven safe. Switzerland has actually gone so far as to say that 5G has caused health problems. It's like the verbiage is important because they're like, "We put on these 102 new 5G antennas, and now people are sick." And they related it to it. The Swiss doctor tickled me because he's like, "What are we doing? Why? We have scientists. We have the means. Let's do some of this testing." And it really should be that simple. Somebody should be doing some testing, but everyone's just looking around like, "Prove it. Prove it." You're making them prove it that their kids are sick. That's ridiculous. It's just, it is that simple. We should be doing the testing ourselves. The telecom people have told the Senate hearing that they are absolutely not going to do any research on their technology. They're not putting aside a single dollar for any research on that technology. So, someone should be doing it. We don't do it like we're not guinea pigs. Shouldn't just do it, you know, in the neighborhoods and see how it rolls out, see how it happens. It's really, really frustrating because there's plenty of evidence that says it is harmful at this point. So, we know you're not moved by sick children or scientific data, so maybe financial effects. It looks like today that Lloyds of London and Swiss Breeze-
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Judy Mitchner, then Rourke Vane, then Cindy Lee.
City Council, thank you for having us. I'd like to talk about some recent news events regarding 5G and cell antennas. In March, Sprint turned off their cell antenna at Westin Elementary School after 10 cancer cases were reported by students, teachers, and children living in the vicinity. Power density measurements just feet away from this antenna showed an average of 5,000 to 20,000 microwatts per square meter, roughly 0.05 to 0.2% of the FCC safety limit. Permitting information for the antennas in our area show that the exposure in our, in and around our homes can be hundreds, even thousands of times higher than exposure next to the antenna at Westin Elementary. How do you think it makes us feel, knowing that every day we're being exposed to thousands of times of more radiation than the people at this school where 10 cancer cases arose? In April, the City of Brussels halted their 5G rollout, as was just mentioned, specifically due to radiation concerns. Environmental Minister Celine Fremos stated, "The people of Brussels are not guinea pigs whose health I wish to sell out at a profit." How do you know, how do you think we feel, knowing that our city council has no problem experimenting on us against our will? In June, CBS 13 reported on a Verizon antenna installed just outside Kids Inc. daycare in Folsom. The daycare owner claims that she was going out of business because half her students are leaving to get away from the antennas. Verizon is giving the owner the same treatment we've received, refusing to answer questions, refusing to move the antenna. Verizon was also found to have constructed the antenna without a valid permit. This story shows the reckless and abusive manner in which Verizon operates. It's also another example of people's lives-
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete. Thank you. The next speaker is Rourke Vane, then Cindy Lee, then Lori Mendoza.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the Public Records Act submittal that I just did today. I'm asking for a viewable map of installed and proposed small cell locations for Verizon and any other telecom provider in the Greenhaven Pocket Area. I want the details on the closest physical address for each small cell, the type of small cell, 4G or 5G, and the physical configuration, e.g. mast-mounted antenna pole or pole-mounted 5G antenna, such as the Verizon Samsung antennas currently installed on Pocket Road, the maximum stated output of each 4G/5G device, and the range of specific frequencies each device is licensed to radiate.
Oh, yeah.
I also want details, ask for details on the cellular tower frequency upgrades and power upgrades in the Greenhaven Pocket Area that have taken place or are planned from 2017 and forward, and the map of the Verizon plans to provide Wi-Fi in the parks, including the physical location of the poles and the type of devices to be mounted on the poles. I'm also requesting an explanation of the reason residents are not given advanced written notification of the planned installation of pole-mounted small cells. The current process is not transparent. That's what I want, is transparency added to this process. The public has been kept in the dark. And the current process is not transparent and respectful to the residents. Why is there no appeals process? There's nothing we seem to be able to do about this. All we do is come here and speak. We don't get any feedback from you or Verizon. The city owns the assets. Don't be afraid of taking control of our assets. Those are our assets too. We own those poles. Why is there no online, why is the online permit viewing process so cumbersome? It's impossible to get meaningful information on cellular tower permits or small cells. This cloaks the permitting process from public view and runs counter to the Sacramento City transparency promise. As a final comment, Elk Grove recently passed a small cell setback ordinance for residential areas. I propose we do the same. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Cindy Lee, then Lori Mendoza, then Janice Andres.
Evening.
Hi. Just five days ago, a mainstream publication in Switzerland, as shown on the screen, published some of the first reports of people being harmed by 5G technology. After 5G antennas were installed near their homes, residents of a neighborhood in Geneva began experiencing headaches, insomnia, fatigue, and tinnitus. People in our neighborhood have reported some of these exact same symptoms. These individuals in Geneva also complained of feeling helpless and victimized in their own home. They have reached out to the public officials and been told that the equipment is compliant with their safety standards, and there's nothing they can do. No specific evidence that the conditions they are being subjected to are safe and has been provided to them. This precisely mirrors the experiences members of our community have had, feelings of victimization and helplessness and a complete lack of support from our elected officials. Most frustrating, no regulatory authorities anywhere in the world are able to provide specific evidence that the conditions they are being subjected to is safe. Does this not raise a huge red flag in your minds? This is your decision to make. Sacramento, one of the first 5G cities in the world, will go down in history as a public health disaster. Lastly, this article takes comments from a doctor and member of Swiss Parliament regarding 5G. The members of Parliament highlights the clear absence of studies regarding the safety of 5G or how it will interact with the other radiation sources we are already exposed to. He has called for a halt to the 5G rollout in Switzerland until these effects have been thoroughly studied. Our group is here tonight to tell you we do not want to be subject to the dangers of 5G and request that you take action-
If you're commenting, your time is complete.
...to protect our health and rights. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks for your comments tonight.
Next speaker is Lori Mendoza, then Janice Andres, Daniel Devlin Howe. Is Lori Mendoza here? I don't see any. Janice Andres? Daniel Devlin Howe? Albriett Monaco? How about Chad Busto? No Chad Busto?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, you're up.
Mr. Busto, please come to the podium.
Yeah, I know I am. If I say something, you're just, the whole two minutes, you-
Mr. Busto, you need to come to the podium, please.
Okay. If I, if I, if I speak or I say anything, like, you're not, you can't respond.
You have two minutes to address the council during public comment.
Interesting. Okay. So, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding on this planet because people lie a lot and we deceive each other. If Sacramento is a, is a city, a city is designated by its entire population of citizens and all of its buildings, but especially its language, because it's really all three. And it works the same in every city in the United States of America, Seattle, Los Angeles, Chicago, Houston, New York, and really any human city. But that means then that if Sacramento is one city, then all 500,000 of us are the same thing. And that means then that as a city council, as a city hall, you are you, and she is you, and you are me, and we are all the police officers and the public, but we're also the English language. And we all know what the English language is. We speak it every day. And it's all 350,000 of its words, including all of the bad ones. And all of the words that I'm going to say right now, you're going to understand because you've heard them before, because you know them, because you're aware of them. And when we as human beings are aware of something, it's a part of our identity. So, as Americans, as Californians, and as people who live in Sacramento, the entire English language, including things like criminal, rapist, murderer, and accomplices to murder, are who we all are and who we are all are going to be until we decide to change our language. And I'm going to challenge the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of us and the rest of the people who are in here that if another murder happens in this community, it's going to be all of our fault.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Yalco Lacoe, was difficult to read, Robert Copeland, and then Timothy G. Mr. Copeland.
We're going to be corrupt if we single out other people for another murder.
Mr. Copeland, and then Timothy G.
Good evening, Mr. Copeland.
Well, I want to say, I hope City Councilmember Ashby gets our aquatic center, to tell you the truth. And Mr. City Councilmember Carr's concerns should be recognized about the libraries, and his district should be improved. Yesterday, me and City Councilmember Steve Panz were at the RTB retreat, and we were put in the same group, including County Board Member Serna, and I thought we agreed on a lot of stuff. My main point, next point is, I don't, the 5G people may have a point. I don't know enough about it to speak and tell you on that, but they, have you done your homework? Have you done public outreach before you put these 5G towers in people's neighborhoods? I don't think you've done it, because I know you have not done it on other projects.
They did.
Really? Come on, do your homework and get the public outreach before, listen to the people before you do something, not after you put it in. And I know last meeting, three people were here from my apartment complex, myself and two others, and the other two were speaking against 5G, not living in District 4. My main point is, I'm not going to say because Mr. Mayor Stenberg's not here, so I'm not going to criticize person when they're not here. But I'm going to say something else. I support rent control, just cause eviction, and if the city council has any other plan, I'm going to oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Timothy G. is our final speaker this evening.
Good evening, Mr. G.
I like these evenings now when they're warm, the summer. I was here last in the winter, and it's not, even California winter, Sacramento Valley winters are not like San Diego. And this will be my sixth, and I hear you discussing housing, but nothing seems to move for myself. And I know that of the thousands of people in Sacramento County metro, Sacramento, they're not being accounted for as far as housing. Heard mention of the Inside Magazine, the free magazine that comes out weekly or monthly- monthly, said something about proposing tent encampments. I don't know, is that the solution? I don't think so. But I would note also that, you know, like, you talk, you noted people with mortgages without, no metro was made of renting, no metro was made of shelters. A lot of people live on the river or, you know, under storefronts. To me, I mean, I could walk two blocks down here in the summertime, and I could see two dozen, count two dozen people. I mean, that's a blight, you know, sleep under storefronts. I mean, I don't know. That's, believe it or not, Sacramento, to an extent, it's California, it is something of a tourist destination. It's a blight. It's a visual blight, it's a social blight. So, what I'm suggesting is that, and I repeat this, the market does not provide housing for everybody because it's a business, big business, and government at every level plays the tune with big business. You're not going to run out the real estate or construction industries. So, I just don't see anything happening.
Mr. G, thank you for your comments tonight. Madam Clerk?
I have no more speakers this evening.
Members, that concludes our business for the day. If there's nothing else, Madam Clerk?
There is nothing else on the agenda.
Then we are adjourned at 8:35 PM. Thank you, everyone. Good job.